Order. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our August 16th version of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Carroll County. We will begin by, as we always do, establishing a quorum.
Mr. Wathers?
I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Hoff?
Mr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Klosick?
Commissioner Wamps?
Secretary Eisenberg?
Here.
Mr. Chair, please let the record reflect that five members are present and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is review and approval of the agenda. Do you have any changes to the agenda that was submitted to us?
No, there are no changes to the agenda.
Chair would be happy to entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as submitted. Will we approve the agenda? A second. All in favor? Aye. Sounds unanimous to me. Sounds like it's approved. And then we have review and approval of the minutes from July 19th, 2022. Does anyone have any edits to offer?
Yep.
Otherwise, we'd be happy to entertain a motion that they be approved.
I make a motion that we approve the July 19th minutes.
Second? I hear a second. All right. All in favor? Aye. Sounds unanimous? And signed. And signed. Hand this down to the line. Done. Very efficient this morning. Mm-hmm. Model of efficiency. All right. Move on to item six, Commission Member Reports. I don't have anything to report. We don't have an ex officio with us today. Any other members have anything to report? Then we'll move on to item seven, which is the Administrative Report. Madam Secretary.
Hi, good morning, everyone. We do have a long agenda this morning and I don't really have a lot to report on for administrative issues for today. So there are no extensions either. So with that, I'll have Abigail Rogers give you an update on BZA cases for this month.
Morning.
Morning.
So two BZA cases were heard in July. Case 6400, James Welsh, was for a contractor's equipment storage yard with distance variances at 1340 Deer Park Road, Westminster. That's in the agriculture zone, District Two. The board approved the use. Case 6202, Joseph Gould, was for a country inn at 5601 Ridge Road, Mount Airy, in the agriculture zone of District Four. The board also approved the use. Two BZA cases are being heard in August. Case 6409, BAT Farm, is for a country inn at 1733 Whedekin Farm Drive, Westminster, in the agriculture and conservation zones of District Two. Planning found the use consistent. The case will be heard on August 30th. Case 6404, Mulligan Recovery Center, is for the expansion of a rehabilitation center from eight beds to 10 beds, along with distance variances. The property is located at 829 Franklin Avenue in Westminster in the R10,000 zone in District Three. Planning found the use consistent. The case will be heard on August 31st.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Abigail. And again, just as a reminder, and not to have a big discussion about this, but also will be the Stavellows property will be heard on August 31st as well, which is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision from its June meeting. So I just wanted to remind you of that. And we can talk more later if you'd like to have an agenda item to talk about that particular work session item.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have.
All you have. Well, we're flying through this agenda, so.
Yeah, well, for now. Yeah.
It's gonna get harder.
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to item eight, which is Special Report. It's case number S210019, Westminster Solar.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Let me get our PowerPoint pulled up. Okay. All right. I am Kirsten Eggerl of Carroll County's Development Review. We have for you today two projects of mine, the first of which is Westminster Solar, S210019. This is a special report. It's a special report of a site plan that is currently in process. You will see this again and the standard site plan process. We're just before you today with a special report with a request from the developer according to our code, which we will get to as we go through the report. If you guys could introduce yourselves as well, we'll get started with the report.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Kelly Schaefer Miller, 73, East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland 21157. I'm here this morning on behalf of the developer. We thank you for this morning's presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning. Kate Larkin, 2003, Western Avenue, Suite 225, Seattle, Washington, 98121. I am the developer of the solar energy project. Thank you for having us today.
Did you fly in from Seattle, Washington to be here today?
I did.
Wow.
We also, I should also add that we have Mr. Nick Leffner from Kimley Horn, whose group was prepared with, or was tasked with preparing the actual site plan for this. So he's here as well.
Good morning.
Thank you to all three of you for being here this morning. Appreciate it. Okay, so Westminster Solar, like I said, it's a site plan. We're here for a special report. We'll talk about where the site's located and then what the request is. This is located just north of the city of Westminster, just to the east of the Carroll County Airport. You'll see the airport right over here. We are outside of city limits. This is in the county zoning district. It's an industrial light zoning, I-1. Here's a site closer up. It's on the east side of Route 97 and just to the north of Old Bachman's Valley Road, which is very close again to the airport, just to the east of that area. What's being proposed here is a solar panel facility, a ground-mounted solar panel facility. This is, this is an industrial zone property, so it's called the zoning code for solar energy generating systems in industrial zones. I've included that text in the report as well. What we're talking about today in particular is Section D3, which is setbacks. Setbacks for this site are one standard set of setbacks, and there's a provision in the code that allows for the developer to request for up to 50% reduction of that standard setback, with consideration of the Planning Commission and with the supplementation of landscaping to help buffer the site. And that is what we are here for today. The developer has requested that setback to the maximum, 50%. I'll read through this zoning text here for those who are not looking at the reports like we are. So setback shall be 200 feet from the boundaries of all adjoining residentially zoned properties and 100 feet from the boundary lines of adjoining non-residentially zoned properties. I'm gonna back up a little bit because we do have properties of both zoning types in this area. Wish I had a zoomed-in view. If you look closely at the papers you might have still, you'll see to the east, there's a residentially zoned property. It's residentially zoned at the property line. It's residentially zoned in full. The standard setback there would be 200 feet. And to the south, we have a property that's partially industrial zoned and partially residentially zoned. It's important to note that for the full extents that the property lines are shared for these two properties, they are both industrially zoned. That is what the zoning office bases this consideration off of. So if it's industrially zoned where the property share property lines, it's considered industrially zoned for the setback requirements. Same would apply for the, and we can't see it on this map because it's within the city, but all the properties to the west of the site are industrially zoned within the city of Westminster as well. So that same industrial, non-residential zoning district would apply there. So what they're requesting is the setbacks from those properties to be modified down to 50% per Section 3B, which is the Planning Commission may reduce required setback for any yard setback by up to 50%, provided that supplemental landscaping, as may be determined by the Planning Commission, is provided. So that's what we're looking at today. Again, this is a site plan under review. We'll have all the time we'd like when we get to the concept review to look at the actual site plan. It's a solar panel site plan, so really I think the buffers here, the landscaping and the setbacks is a bigger situation than the panels themselves might be. So that's what we'll talk about today. So again, we're reducing it by, or they are proposing to reduce it by the total 50% from the property lines. The one exception's gonna be to the west. You'll see that the setback looks like it's greater than that 50% would have been. That's industrially zoned again within the city off of 97. However, 97 in the future is planned to be expanded. It's planned to be widened like it was further up north on 97. So this plan from the beginning has been designed to accommodate for that. We're moving through the review process. The state highway administration's in a strong review of this here as well, making sure they're getting what they need. In the future, you're gonna see the property line be adjusted a little bit to accommodate that, but it's important to note that regardless of whether the property line is rare to this day or in the future when the state highway gets their dedication, the property line gets adjusted, it still is gonna be within that 50% reduction. So even if the property line is adjusted in the future to accommodate the state highway expansion, they're still gonna meet the, if the 50% reduction is approved, they would still meet that setback requirement. So that's why you see it setback so far from there, even though it's industrially zoned on that side. So regarding the request itself and the landscaping that's being proposed in conjunction with that, and we'll go back to the last page here in a minute, the developer's proposing what's called Class C screening. This is a demonstration of what Class C screening looks like. You can see it's very dense. In fact, it's the highest density of planting units. When you can look at all the screening types in the landscape manual the county has, it's the highest density. And that's at their own choice there. Again, this is a request that they're making, a proposal that they're putting forth based on some information that we have in our manual. So they chose the Class C screening, which is shown around the majority of the site. And we'll go back to that page now. It's very hard to see in the screen. I apologize for that. But you can see here, again, this is the southwest side, close to the intersection of Old Bachman Valley Road and 97. The entrance to this development site is gonna be off of Old Bachman Valley Road in that area. And then just to the west of that is the connection poles to the utilities. Those two areas are the only areas where there is not landscape proposed. Of course, you can't drive through bushes and the power lines need to be cleared. So those are the only areas where there's not this landscape buffer shown. Otherwise, it wraps around the entire site. Just on the outside of the fence, chain link fence around the facility and the landscape buffer will be on the outside of that. So you'll see bushes, not, not chain link. It goes all the way around the perimeter. And this area here, which is adjacent to the residentially zoned property, they're proposing the fence to be close to the solar panels still, the landscaping to be further out against the property lines in a forest conservation easement area to be between the two areas. Okay, so forest conservation in the beginning at least won't serve the same purposes as a landscape buffer because of course the trees are gonna be very small, but they'll grow up one day and you'll have trees there between the landscaping and the chain link. And then the landscaping wraps around the southeastern side here. There are two areas on the plan currently that are showing a combined area of existing vegetation and some additional landscaping. I wanted to note too, and Kate, maybe when you're in town, you can take a look and see, some of that's been cut back. So some of that's not gonna meet those objectives moving forward here. We'll review that in final to make sure that all the areas proposed to keep vegetation still has vegetation there to keep. If not, it will just probably be the same as that Class C that's shown around the rest of the site. And then perhaps all the way back around to where the driveway is. So that is what's being proposed here for the reduction. Again, the standard setbacks have, in the code, are allowed to be reduced up to 50% based on the Planning Commission reviewing it and the landscape being proposed. The concept plan will be before you again when we get to that point, hopefully very soon. But we just wanted to, the developer wanted to get this special report before you to get a consideration regarding this proposal for the setback reductions. Obviously, if it's not approved, it can impact the site, so we need to know that to move forward with the site plan review. So if you guys want to add anything here or if the Planning Commission had any questions?
Now, if there's anything you'd like to add, we'd be happy to hear.
Good morning. Thank you. I will just add a few things. We appreciate, like I said, being here for this special report. It was at our request. That development review allowed us to come for this special report for exactly what Kirsten just stated, which is, we believe are about a month to two months before appearing for you for a concept review. And it's very crucial to the developer that they get a handle on what area of the site can be used before we proceed forward. Very specifically, they are in the timeline now of ordering the actual equipment, if you will. And so this has a great bearing on the site. I appreciate Kirsten's staff report on this. This is, as you all are aware, solar is a permitted use in the industrial district and the solar code specifically allows the Planning Commission to grant a reduction in the setbacks. So like Kirsten has pointed out, I will use right and left so that I don't get myself confused. To the right of the site is the only adjoininger who is residentially zoned. So in consideration of that, there has been the forest conservation easement, which is an additional buffer there, as well as, as Kirsten pointed out in her staff report, there's more dense and increased landscaping than otherwise would be required under the code. We do believe that there will be limited view of this from any of the adjoining properties by virtue of the landscape and the fencing that's gonna be provided. Route 97, just to clarify, there's a 30-foot wide strip there that will be dedicated to SHA and then there's an additional 50-foot strip that will be reserved and, or undeveloped, if you will, so that in the event SHA needs that as part of the widening of 97, that is anticipated and shown on the plan, which is why you can, you can see that greater area there to the left side of the site. This is a very limited intensity use, as you would imagine, especially for an industrially zoned property. The, the full use of the site, if you will, other than the panels themselves, is very limited maintenance. So this is not like a traffic generator or any other, there's really the only, the only thing that's being buffered from this site is visual view of the panels. There's no other noise or dust or odors or anything that's generated as, by virtue of the solar panels. So we are here to answer any specific questions. We did actually also prepare kind of a view shed to show you the impact of the landscaping on the ground and how that will buffer the site. So if you're interested in seeing that, we brought some copies that we can hand out to everyone as well. And like I said, Kate, I would like her to just very briefly explain to you, this is a community solar project. And I don't know about you, but I, this is kind of new to me from that standpoint, so I appreciated her brief synopsis of that. But other than that, we are, we're here for any questions that you might have.
Well, maybe while she's providing that, I think we'd be happy to see the handouts.
Yeah.
Before Kate gets started, I will note, in our code, there's a new section for solar panels. It's specifically called Community Solar Systems and Ag, Ag Zoning District, something like that. Community solar in our code is different than the community solar Kate's gonna talk about here. Community solar in our code is usually utilized in a way that it's describing the community solar generating systems in the agricultural zoning district. It is what it is in the code. It's a mouthful, so we shortened it to community solar. This is an industrial zone property. This is an industrial solar generating facility that goes back into the community. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Thank you.
So this project will participate in Maryland's Community Solar Energy Generating Systems Pilot Program. It's a seven-year pilot program that will allow several hundred megawatts of community solar projects to be located within Baltimore Gas and Electric's utility territory. And as a result, hundreds of individual residential, nonprofit, business, small commercial, et cetera subscribers can subscribe to the project to receive the power on paper allocated to their electric bills. And in return, they receive approximately a 10% discount off of their electricity bills for subscribing to the solar project. So basically, community solar is designed to allow for greater access to solar energy benefits that folks may not have otherwise been able to access because perhaps they're a renter or their roof cannot structurally support solar or it's shaded because of trees. Whatever the reason is, if you don't wanna put solar on your house or you can't, you can then subscribe to these projects that are now located throughout BG&E territory and receive those economic and environmental benefits of solar in your local community. This particular project is 1.5 megawatts alternating current. That basically means about 200 to 500 individual subscribers will be able to receive the energy from it.
Very good. Thank you. We appreciate your presentation. I appreciate you being here. And it's nice to have these special reports because it gives us a chance on the very front end to hear and understand what's going on and be a part of the conversation. And we appreciate also your efforts to be good neighbors. That means a lot in our community. So thank you for all that. The others might have questions. I just have one quick comment. It's, the only slight criticism I might have here is when you look at the footprint overhead, we have good landscaping all the way around it, which is great. Where the gate is, you're coming up the road and you're almost looking diagonally up through the entire project. You know, if the gate were somewhere else where you just drive by it, but instead, as you're coming up Littlestown Pike, you're almost looking straight up through the entire project. It gives you the greatest view of the panels despite all of the very nice landscaping. I raise that since we're at the very beginning of this, just as a consideration in terms of whether the, the gate, if the gate were moved just a little further even to the right, I think you wouldn't be seeing it quite so much as you're driving up Littlestown Pike. So it's just, just an observation. I don't know how anybody else on the commission feels about that. But, but I very much appreciate the landscaping. And it sounds like, well, I'll leave it, I'll leave it there and ask, Janice, did you have any comments?
Yep. I do say I did have somebody knock on my door about the community project and actually thought it was a scam. So I'm glad to hear that. I did take his information, though.
Very good. Pete, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I would, when it comes to landscaping like this around properties of this nature, I would like to see some birmingham done to where it doesn't look like it's a fortification of, of trees, you know, but there's some undulation from a topography standpoint. And also those berms give that, those immature plantings that you put out initially, it gives it a little bit of height initially. It just kinda helps. But again, that's, that's not something I feel strongly about, but it's a, you know, a guy with a bobcat, you know, you, you know, in an afternoon could remedy that for us. And again, I don't feel that strongly about it, but it's, it's just a preference I have in terms of visualization there.
Michael?
Just a couple of things. I thought that was, I thought it was interesting, the name Westminster Solar. I didn't think it was a scam, but I thought it was very coincidental and I did some research on your company. I thought it was pretty cool. Anyway, and you checked off some, some of my questions during your presentation. Couple others, though. The fence boundary, how far is that within the newly proposed boundaries? Or is that right along, you know, the setback, the new setback?
Do you mean along Route 97?
Well, isn't there a chain link fence around the entire area?
Not the new boundaries, but off of the existing, off the property lines?
Right.
Well, I certainly can't read it from that drawing on this.
I'm gonna let our technical expert speak to that.
Right. On the north side, it's setback about 30 feet off the property line. So there's the 15-foot landscape buffer all the way around the site. On the north side, there's actually another stormwater management facility behind the landscape buffer, between the landscape buffer and the fence line. The west side of the site, the same thing, 15-foot landscape buffer, 15-foot stormwater management facility, and then the fence. So I think the fence is setback about 120 feet off the center line of Littlestown Pike.
Okay.
On Old Bachman's, it's setback the 30 feet off of the center lines. There's the land, there's just the landscape buffer along Littlestown Pike. There's industrial work facility there. So the fence is setback probably about 20 feet off of the middle of the road.
Okay.
And then the residentially zoned property, it's setback, I think, around 80, 80 or 90 feet off of that property line because there's the 15-foot landscape buffer, and then about 70 feet, the forest conservation area before the fence line.
So, so I'm clear. My concern mostly is about the residential property. You know, because that 100-foot reduction is pretty significant, I think. So if, say it's, it's 100-foot, you know, separation, is that fence line within, closer to the residence? So it would be about 20 feet?
Okay.
So the panels themselves are at least 100 feet from the residential property?
So, yeah, my, my concern is the residence. I think 100 foot less with the fence is, is a concern. And I'll leave it at that. The, and what's the height of the actual panels that would be in the footprint?
So they'll be no taller than nine feet. And these are fixed tilt panels, so they will not move throughout the day, which is something that you might be familiar with from other solar facilities. So these will not track the sun. They will be stationary.
Okay, okay. And then the, I think that was my only, there was one other, but it just went away. So they were my, my concerns and I thought that was interesting. Thank you. And you did, the other concern, not current concern, but question was just to learn about this because I think we're gonna see more proposals about solar, because it is 2022. The, you answered the questions about how many providers or users of this would be. Oh, I know it was. Is there a storage, an energy storage unit from the solar-generated power? A battery? I don't know.
Right.
A generator?
Well, I certainly can't read it from that drawing on this.
I'm going to let, I'm going to let our technical expert speak to that.
Around the whole site?
Right.
On the north side, it's set back about 30 feet off the property line. So there's the 15-foot landscape buffer all the way around the site. On the north side, there's actually another stormwater management facility behind the landscape buffer, between the landscape buffer and the fence line. The west side of the site, the same thing, 15-foot landscape buffer, 15-foot stormwater management facility, and then the fence. So I think the fence is set back about 120 feet off the center line of Littlestown Pike.
Okay.
Old Bachman's, it's set back the 30 feet off of the center lines. There's the land, there's just the landscape buffer along Littlestown Pike, along Old Bachman's. There's a municipal water facility there. So the fence is set back probably about 20 feet off of the middle of the road. And then the residential zone property, it's set back, I think, around 80, 80 or 90 feet off of that property line because there's the 15-foot landscape buffer. And then about 70 feet, the forest conservation area before the fence line.
So, so I'm clear, my concern mostly is about the residential property. You know, because that 100-foot reduction is pretty significant, I think. So if, say it's, it's 100-foot, you know, separation, is that fence line within, closer to the residence? So it would be about 20 feet.
Right there.
Okay.
So the panels themselves are at least 100 feet from the residential property?
So, yeah, my, my concern is the residence. I think 100-foot less with the fence is, is a concern. And I'll leave it at that. The, and what's the height of the actual panels that would be in the footprint?
So they'll be no taller than nine feet. And these are fixed tilt panels, so they will not move throughout the day, which is something that you might be familiar with from other solar facilities. So these will not track the sun. They will be stationary.
Okay. Okay. And then the, I think that was my only, there was one other, but it just went away. So they were my, my concerns and I thought that was interesting. Thank you. And you did, the other concern, not current concern, but question was just to learn about this because I think we're going to see more.
Absolutely.
Proposals about solar because it is 2022. The, you answered the questions about how many providers or users of this would be. Oh, I know who it was. Is there a storage, an energy storage unit from the solar generated power? A battery? I don't know.
Right.
A generator?
There will be no storage battery associated with this project. So this will just purely generate the power it generates when it generates and put it onto the grid.
Oh, cool. Okay.
And I would like to note briefly, because you mentioned the neighbors, I have actually spoken with both the neighbor to the east and the neighbor to the south. Both had a lot of questions similar to what we've discussed here and what's already in my report. Just questions about how to read the plan and what's actually being proposed here, how far away things are going to be. The only concern that remained after talking with those neighbors was on the south side, the neighbor to the south side, there was apparently what's called Johnson grass, which I learned a little bit about yesterday when I was on the phone. Johnson grass is invasive and it's a problem for farmers and it spreads a lot. So there was Johnson grass over there at one point in time, I think might be some contributing factor as to why the brush might have been removed. So when we go through our final review, it's something we're going to keep an eye out for. Again, we're going to be looking at the landscape buffer along that side because a lot of it was already removed, what was proposed to remain. So the question will be, can all of it remain that's there now, or does it all have to go away? So that was one of the remaining things from the discussions I had with some citizens.
Okay.
And a quick response to one of Mr. Kane's questions as well. You raised the concern of just the vastness, if you will, of the setbacks requested. And we appreciate that we are requesting the 50% maximum reduction in setbacks. But just to that point, I did want to point out that in the industrial district, principal permitted uses, which there are, as you're aware, several very intense principal permitted uses, vehicle repair, vehicle service, those sorts of uses, the setbacks that they are required to meet are 10-foot front yard, 10-foot side yard, and 15-foot rear yard. So this is actually, even with the requested, and I'm, I could be mischaracterizing in the sense that there could be additional distance requirements that they would need to request variances from, but those are the bulk requirements, I should say, of the I-1 district. And so I'm, I would just, you know, point out to you that as it goes, even with the maximum requested reduction here, we're still at a great setback for such a low, intense use where there really is no, like I said, that really the only impact here is potentially visual. And hopefully this view shed exhibit will also ease some of your concerns there because this really does show how well this dense landscaping that the developer has proposed here will buffer the actual visual component of this site.
And I think that's the positive. It's, it's low intensity.
Stephen, did you have any?
No, everybody's pretty much answered all the questions that, or asked all the questions that I was thinking.
That's the benefit of going last.
Yes, yes, it is.
Are there any members of the public that have any comments they'd like to make on this project? If you would step to the microphone, give your name and address, please.
John Frock, 191 Bachman's Valley Road, Westminster. I own the industrial land across Old Bachman's Valley Road. It kind of seems to be glazed over, but it's a working farm with a residence there. And I'd just like to see that treated the same as the rest of the residential areas around it. Because we never requested to be zoned industrial. The farm's been there before Carroll County was even formed. Same family, 147 years. We're putting up with a lot being there, everything encroaching on us. And I'd just like to see it at least the same consideration as a residential because that's basically what it is right now, other than being farmed. And the buffers that are there now on the Old Bachman's Valley Road are mostly briars and a few scrub trees, and I would hope they would just come out of there and do landscaping the whole way around, you know. I'd just like to see a little bit more of it and the setback not be so, you know, not, not cut in half. Because just because it's industrial, I mean, it's like I say, it's not an industrial park there. It's a farm with a residence. So that's it. Just want to let you know what's over there. It's not just industrial land.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to make? Sure. Same deal, if you state your name and address at the microphone.
Mark Whalen, 2710 Deer Park Road. I'm here actually today to learn a little bit about solar. We are potentially in an area that's going to be facing this very same issue in agriculture zone. And so I'm here to educate myself, to learn about the process, to learn about these systems a little bit. And it sounds like the things that are being voiced are exactly what my community and neighbors are concerned about. And that's primarily the aesthetics, right? The aesthetics are a big deal. So I would just ask that the commissioners and the board that review this, just, you know, the planned views, the two-dimensional views are great, but Carroll County's got a lot of rolling hills and topography. And you can see these things when you're driving down the road, your, your property's adjoining it, and you happen to be uphill or downhill. And these things might have a nice buffer landscape that looks pretty on paper, but when you stand back after landscaping's there due to the topography, you still can see these. And I think it's incumbent upon you guys to ensure that the residents of these communities really are shielded and don't see these. No one, no one in these communities moved out here with the intent that we wanted to live next to a solar farm, right? So I would just ask for that, that consideration and thorough evaluation of the site plan, not just the two-dimensional view of it, but the three-dimensional, the topography. And, and just ensure that that screening is, is thorough enough, whether it's berms, you know, that you've got to raise the grade to be able to shield it. So, but I think the aesthetics is, is going to be the big thing. You know, I'm not anti-solar, you know, obviously it's, it's a viable energy option, but it needs, it needs to be protective of, of the surrounding properties, commercially, residentially, anybody driving through. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's the other benefit of having this as a special report because you get, get to have comments early on while you're still putting things together. And we've dealt with some of the issues that that gentleman was just raising with, with quarries and other things where the landscaping is an issue and, and we have the topography. So if those could be taken into consideration as well, I think that would, when we get to the next phase of this, the concept, the more those are preemptively addressed, I think the easier the path is to do the good things that, that you want to do. Anybody who follows this knows that my comments, I, I put my bias out there. I think they're ugly. I've said that from the very beginning. And when you're driving through beautiful agricultural areas of our county, which has a proud and long and strong history of agriculture, you come over a beautiful rise and you look at a vista of, of solar panels. I don't particularly care for that. So anything that you can do to, to deal with that in advance, keep, keep our beautiful countryside looking pretty and what we think of as agricultural, while at the same time understanding that this is a low intensity. There are a lot of really good reasons to have it, not against solar. I think we've shown that by a lot of the things we've done here as a commission. But we are really sensitive to, to the aesthetics. And so that's something that we will be looking very closely at when you bring the concept plan in. So any of the things that you can take from today and take a look at the topography, are we coming over hills and having a vista that's going to include this, or it's pretty flat around there? I don't, I don't recall exactly. But those would be things that will certainly be part of the conversation as we go, as we go forward. But you've got a lot of good things here. And I think you've heard comments and questions that can help, help guide your thinking. Anything you want to add in light of any of the questions or comments that you've seen today? You've come a long way and I want to make sure you have a chance to tell us everything that, that, that you want us to take into consideration as we, and that you can take back with you as well.
Just that we appreciate today's appearance. We respect everyone's comments. This is slightly different than some of the agricultural properties, which you might be discussing later today as part of the text amendment discussion, in the sense that this is industrial and right along Route 97. I, I do think, and if you have any specific questions about the view shed exhibit, please feel free to ask those. But again, I, I do think that this was, this really depicts nicely the buffer that the, the increase to landscaping, and I say increase because it's additional landscaping that's not per se required in the code, will provide for this site. So I would ask you to take all of those things into consideration. And Mr. Wathers, we will take a look. I know one of the comments you made initially was the access point, and we can certainly take a look at that and be prepared to offer any additional comments on that when we reappear for concept plan. But today, we would ask that you approve the setback modifications that are requested so that we have the guidance and in taking into consideration all of the factors that you heard here today and all of the additional steps that, that have been offered to you. This is also, Kate did not elaborate too much on this, but I will say in working with her, this company specifically is very geared towards the natural element, if you will, and maintaining a pollinator species with the existence of the solar panels. So this is perhaps also just slightly more of a unique solar development than you otherwise see in the county. And I will leave that as, as it is. But I, I think that this will be a, a good example of responsible solar development in our county.
And appreciate all that. And I don't view the request for the setback reduction as mutually exclusive with the comments that we've heard today about berms and maybe changing where the gate is and, and other things that can be done to address those concerns. So, you know, I think even with the setback request, if the commission grants it, those things can still be considered as you bring the concept plan forward. So unless there are any other questions, if, if the commission's inclined to, someone makes a motion that setbacks be reduced by 50% as requested, that would be great. Anyone inclined to do that?
Sure. I make a motion that we approve a setback by 50% for Westminster Solar located on the east side of Maryland 97, north side of Old Bachman's Valley Road, Westminster 21157.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second to reduce the setbacks by 50% as permitted by the code. You think a roll call or a voice vote?
I'll do a roll call, though, if that's okay with you. Ms. Kerkner?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, please let the record reflect that four in favor and the motion carries.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming in.
We look forward to seeing you shortly for, for a concept.
We'll get on the project very soon.
Yeah, we'll see you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Jeff, just as an aside, because this is coming up again later, the solar thing. I, like you, I was reading about this industry over the weekend. They're expecting $4 trillion a year invested in this industry. We're going to see a ton more of this. And I think we need to get our grip around what, how our county feels about, because the, the visual thing is important.
Absolutely.
And, because we're going to, our land's relatively cheap compared to Howard County. That's why they're here. And so we, we need to, I, I think either we need to kind of hold the gun on the buffer, you know, we did it for a reason.
Yeah.
Because we can't seem arbitrary. I'm, I'm really, you know, and, and I want solar. I mean, I, I want to be, I want to be one of those people. But again, we like our agrarian, you know, we're spending $4 million a year to preserve the character of our county through farm preservation. So.
It is something we can definitely discuss in the future, but it's not on the agenda to have this discussion now. So just to keep with that.
Since it's coming up again, I just, you know, we're going to talk about it later. I just kind of want to say that this is, there's going to be more of this because it's.
Sure. We just need to be careful to talk about things that are not, you know, agenda related. So, thank you.
One thing, just for the work session, maybe we can add that as a topic.
Yes.
And remind us of where we stand.
Absolutely.
All right.
For now, we're going to talk about the Hurd property, assisted living.
Yeah, this is item nine, right?
S-190030. Again, I'm Kirsten Nagrell, again, development review. We have a few people here with us today in association with this project. I'll let you introduce yourselves, please.
Thanks. Good morning. Clark Schaefer, 73 East Main Street here on behalf of the Stephen Hurd. I have Stephen Hurd here with me today, Dr. Stephen Hurd. And I have Jeff Sigler from CLSI. We're looking forward to the report and to answering any questions you might have.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right. With that being said, so this project is actually a site plan. This is actually a concept site plan. It might look familiar to some of you because it was before you previously for determination of density for the assisted living facility. That was a number of, I think actually years ago at this point, February of 2020. So it was a few years ago, it feels like five years ago. It was before you recently for determination of density for assisted living. We are on the eastern side of Hoxville Road, south side of St. Paul Road here, to the northeast side of the county. You can see down here, I'll zoom in. Okay. So this is the site highlighted in orange there. What's being proposed here is an assisted living facility. Again, like I mentioned, it's already been before the planning commission for determination of density, February 2020. The total acreage of the property is about 18.25 acres. It's actually a remaining portion. Property line shown on here and the shown on the printout that you received in the mail are a little bit funny. We're working on fixing those in the system. So you're going to see a bunch of little lines inside of what is the one whole property. Please note that what's shown on this drawing here in orange is the actual property. It is not broken up into those little bits like that. It's a remaining portion of a subdivision to the southwest here, which occurred a few years ago and has also since then been recorded. Before we get too far from that point there, on this subdivision plat, the remaining portion has an access easement to use a use-in-common driveway that was created in association with that subdivision. Is that Bachman Road? I think that's the way it's pronounced? Okay.
Bachman, Bachman Drive.
Bachman Drive. So it's a private driveway that serves the subdivision here. The remaining portion also has an easement to utilize it. That's been recorded. There's a deed that states who's responsible for what kind of maintenance obligations. I note that because the access, despite what the property line show, is not to St. Paul's Road. As you can see from this drawing, there's a stream that cuts right through that. So the access agreement was set up when the subdivision happened that this property would be able to utilize Bachman Drive. Moving on from that, again, this is a concept site plan for an assisted living facility. The property is zoned agricultural. Everything out here is ag and also utilizing wells and septic systems. I will note that this property to the north and this property to the south are in agricultural preservation agreements just for, you know, what the, what the landscape looks like. So these are both in ag pres agreements here. And the site plan is for an assisted living facility. We'll go through the history a little bit because just like with all assisted living facilities, there's a little bit of a process to get to before the developer even gets to this point. This one started back in 2019 where a plan was submitted to the county for review proposing an 80-bed assisted living facility here. That project as an assisted living facility goes through a process based on the zoning code to first come to planning commission for determination of density and site layout before it goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals as a conditional use. So that's what happened here. The plans came in 2019. In February of 2020, the planning commission took a look at the plans and approved the density, the exterior layout as it was presented there. The minutes were attached to this plan packet as well. And then after that, the Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed and approved the plan, or reviewed and approved the proposed use, I should say, in December of 2020 as well. So that brings us to where we are now, which is concept site plan review. And I hope your screens are a little darker than mine. We might need to fix that because it seems to be a consistent issue that's hard to see. What's shown here is again, the driveway here to the west comes to an ellipse-shaped internal drive with the grass area in the center and five residential buildings surrounding it. There are, I believe, 16 beds per building, total of 80 beds for the entire development. 80 beds was the number that was approved for the density when this was reviewed by the planning commission in 2020. Nothing has changed about that through the review process. In fact, the layout is very, very similar to what was proposed back then. As far as other physical features on the site go, again, the driveway comes in from the west. There is just. There is just where the driveway meets the internal loop drive, there is a sign, a directional sign, that tells you which direction to go for each building or which units, which unit. And if we go back to here, there will also be a sign posted at the end of the driveway where it meets the public road to identify that the site is down the road as well. I believe we might have details of those. So those are the signs that are being proposed. Right now, there's no indication that there's any lighting for them. I don't believe lighting is proposed now or will be proposed. These are wooden signs. That is four by seven, four by seven foot in size, and then four by six for the directional here. And then the only other physical features on the site besides that would be lamp posts around the ring, 12-foot tall residential-style lamp post. There is a dumpster that you can make out right here on the center island, if you would, and there's also a gazebo in that location as well for the center island. Sidewalks go through the center island as well as from the parking areas to each of the buildings. The parking areas, so the minimum requirement for parking for this site worked out to be 30 stalls. 63 parking spaces are shown on the plan, which is in excess of what's minimum requirement. So it certainly satisfies a requirement for parking here, including parking for accessible parking spaces. Moving into the reviews, we'll start with the parking spaces, since that's what we're talking about now, the accessible parking spaces in particular. There's minor issues need to be worked out for making sure that everything on the site can be accessed with accessibility, making sure that the ramps into the doorways are adequate, and ramps into the gazebo is adequate, that when you get out of a vehicle parked in a testable spot, you can go right to a sidewalk. Currently, I believe it looks like it goes out into the drive aisle and then to the sidewalk. So there's little things like that, that when this comes back, you'll see that those have been addressed when we come back for final. I will also note that the water here, water and sewer is private. Well, and septic systems, the site currently shows, you'll see quite a few of these big boxes shown on the drawing, those are septic systems and reserve areas as well, one for each building. As this moves forward, the buildings themselves also will each have their own well. Currently, I believe only two are shown, but that will be addressed as this moves forward through the review process as well. We'll see that chair as this moves forward. Also regarding well and septic, I'm not sure if we have the totals yet for the total usage, but the health department notes that if annual water usage is to exceed 5,000 gallons per day, the applicant needs to process a groundwater appropriation permit and then work with the planning office to add the site to the water and sewer master plan as it uses over 5,000 gallons per day. I'm not sure if we have the total figures for that yet. That's something that will be worked out as this moves forward. The health department again. Fire protection has approved the plan as it is. I'd like to note that Buckman Drive over here, so this, the subdivision's not constructed yet. There is one existing house on, that was most recently built. This is off of the public road. This is where the use-in-common driveway will be. The car here is parked on what will eventually become that paved use-in-common driveway. So that use-in-common driveway was originally intended to be, I believe, 12 feet wide to accommodate the residential subdivision. Now that there's being proposed a commercial site in the back, essentially, it'll be widened to ensure that emergency services can easily get back to the commercial site. So you'll see that will differ than what might have been seen on the subdivision plan back when that was reviewed. So it's widening to, I believe, 18 feet at one point and then 20 feet as it approaches the actual facility. So it'll be 20 feet wide by the time you get to this location here. Additionally, the buildings will be sprinkled as well in construction. We'll have sprinklers in them. Regarding the driveway as well, the engineering review office is still requiring some additional information as part of the review, so you might see some minor changes to the driveway as that moves forward. In particular, the point where the driveway meets the internal circle drive might, the radius turn there, instead of making kind of a sharp turn into it, it might be more of a gradual turn into it. So you might see that change as this moves forward. Again, this is all stuff that's still under review. This has been in the works since 2019, so it's been a lot to get to this point, and there will be more to get to the end here. Something that, had recently received concept review approval is stormwater management. So the site has worked out how the stormwater is going to be handled. There are, hard to see on here, but there are microbioretention ponds near each of the buildings. So they'll have, I believe, seven, seven microbioretention ponds around the site in addition to an area of grading down here, which is a little bit down the hill, leading towards the stream that will handle the quantity of water that comes through it. The grading will absorb that there, so. Stormwater has granted concept approval. Hopefully, we won't see too many changes to the stormwater, at least, as this moves Regarding sidewalk and plannings review, planning reviewed this and noted that the sidewalk connects the parking spaces to the buildings, but it doesn't connect the buildings to the buildings. Something that planning had put in for consideration and had requested be shown on the plans is a sidewalk that connects the buildings to each other, as opposed to just connecting one building to the parking spaces in front of it. So that was a recommendation from the planning office. Forest conservation and landscaping. I don't know if I have a good way to show you the forest conservation short of here in this view. So this area here, again, this is an actual property line that connects to the public road, but it's not being utilized for access. What's being proposed here because of the stream is forest conservation planting. So there's going to be approximately an acre, 0.99 acres of forest conservation easement on both sides of that stream there. So this view, at least on this property, will be buffered from the St. Paul's Road there, and the stream will be protected by the plantings there. There will also be an additional, about one and a half acres of forest conservation banking done off-site to satisfy the requirements for forest conservation. As far as landscaping goes, landscaping was approved as well. As you can see on this drawing, there's quite, quite a bit of landscaping around the external sides of the site, screening or buffering, if you would, and it's a mix of shrubs and trees along the perimeter, allowing for access to the facilities that still need to be able to be accessed as well. So that's why you'll see some gaps here. And around the internal of the site, there's a lot of trees along the drive, shrubs, screening, the dumpster area, and I believe some planting beds as well. So there'll be a lot of landscaping on the site within view of the residences, if you would, as well as perimeter screening around the site as well. So that brings us to where we are today in the review process. Again, this is just a concept review. You've already seen it for, to approve the density. Border zoning appeals has already approved the use. Now it's in the site plan review process. We're here for you today just to take a look at it as a concept review, and will be before you again for final approval. Once we get to that point, as you heard, there's a few things that still do need to be worked out on this project. So if there's any questions or comments that you had or the public had, love to hear them.
Very good. Thank you. Do you all have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an interesting concept for development, the ag zone. It's one that I haven't seen, maybe that they're out there, and that is, take the ag zone and take some individual lots and then put an assisted living facility on the remainder. I think we're all familiar with the fact that these assisted living facilities provide a quite needed outlet for citizens of Carroll County and elsewhere. As you've also heard, this has been through a quite extensive, to date, review process, and most, if not everything, has been worked, worked out. Obviously, we, we need to connect a few more dots before we get final site plan approval. I'd also like to point out that this project is being done by Stephen Hurd, who grew up in that area, and now is a practicing physician in the York area, but this is, this is his home territory. And furthermore, that this is his and his, his family's concept of the development. This is not, this is not a third-party operator that's coming in to buy a piece of ground and put in a large assisted living. He and his family, the current plan is that he and his family will own and operate this. His two sons will be the on-site people that will operate this assisted living facility. We appreciate your concern, your consideration of the matter, and we would ask that you consider, after you've talked about it, motioning that the chair has the authority to sign the final site plan, given that the essence of the development is, is fixed. The location, the architecturals, the driveway. I'd like to add one more thing. That driveway is also unique because of the fact that it is serving an assisted living in addition to the residential, and it has been carefully considered, carefully worked out. There's an elaborate declaration of maintenance obligations that has already been put on record, reviewed by the county, that makes clear to everybody involved, including the five lot owners or six lot owners in the front, that this is a shared drive that will be used in conjunction with this assisted living facility, and there's special accommodations for that in terms of maintenance, upkeep, and repair of that. I'd also like to note, a final, a final note is that we agree with planning's comment on the, on the sidewalk, and that will be incorporated into the, into the final plan. Thank you.
Thank you. It's, it looks nice. We have, we are familiar certainly with this whole process. The, I have just a couple of comments. One is, you know, parking is always an interesting issue, because on the one hand, we want to make sure we have enough. On the other hand, we don't want to have an impervious surface that's bigger than it needs to be. And in this case, we have 30 parking spaces that are required, but we have 63 actually on the, on the plan, so we end up with a lot of impervious surface, maybe twice as much at least as we're, as is required. Why is that really? And is there, is there something that could be done to reduce that, or would that, in your view, reduce the, how the property is used and so forth?
Jeff Ziegler, we can certainly reduce the number. We didn't want to go down to the bare minimum because we felt that 30 parking spaces for all those attendees at this facility might be cutting us a little short on it. But understanding everyone's comments, we can eliminate some of the spaces while we're providing more connectivity with pedestrians, sidewalks, and stuff like that. So, again, I don't know what the magic number is.
Sure.
But I, you know, in order to accommodate one regulation, we can lessen some of the others.
It gives you something to work with, I think, by connectivity. And look, there's, just because the code says 30 is required, doesn't make that the magic number. We totally understand that. And you want it to be convenient, not have people out there, you know, putting lounge chairs in their parking spaces to try to.
And we always, and we always, you know, you, I can tell you're familiar, you know, we've always got this over-under issue, and often when we come in here with the 30, the question comes up, well, what about Thanksgiving?
Right.
You know, when everybody's family comes out there, what are you going to have them parked out on Hawksville Road? It's like, so, yeah, we get it. And, and I, but one key thing I'd like to note from our perspective is that we have achieved concept approval for stormwater management, which means we have met the regs to support that impervious surface. Does not detract from your point, which is, if we don't need it, why do we have it?
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. And the one final thing I'll just ask before we turn it over is, I know there've been some comments from, from members of the community about water runoff and things like that, so it does relate to the impervious surface issue. Could, could you, looking at the plans and looking at how the property is sloped and so forth, could you take just a moment and address or explain how you've addressed water runoff issues so that, to the extent folks from the community are concerned about that, you explain what you've done to address that and why, if they shouldn't be concerned, why shouldn't they be concerned?
Turn that over to Jeff Ziegler.
Thank you.
Sure. So each one of the five facilities has an individual water quality or microbiome facility that all the roof drains from the rooftop will tie into the microbiome facility for water quality. There are two microbiome facilities internally, inside of that arched loop driveway that everything drains into. So those two microbiome facilities take care of the parking lot and the sidewalk that runs internally inside there. All of those systems, microbiome facilities for water quality, are tied into a storm drain system that goes back to the quantity management system that's down south of everything, or I'm sorry, to the northeast of everything, but it's, but it's downgrade. That facility itself will handle the water quantity management for this entire site. And then, of course, everything gets discharged and it goes down into the forestry easement and down into that stream that cuts through that 60-foot line strip.
So I do know a little something about assisted living, because we have some in the family. I kind of disagree with you about the 58. I think that it's probably a good number, simply because Thanksgiving, Christmas, special times when you do something, a lot of family comes. And my experience in Carroll County is, family comes a lot anyway. There's always somebody coming to visit, so I think it's adequate. And not so many assisted living residents have cars. I mean, you may have one or two throughout the whole facility, but I don't think you'll see that. So I think 58's definitely a decent number. I wouldn't recommend cutting it back. Sorry. And, and the other question I had was, I saw the septic reserve areas, does that incorporate first and second replacement systems?
Yeah, yes. Each, each facility, each one of the five different facilities will have its own septic reserve area, which will include the initial system and two replacement systems.
Okay. All right. By the way, we encourage disagreement on this question, so. Your point is well taken, Janice. Pete, you want to, you have any comments or questions?
No, you asked the question about septic, and, and that's where I was headed. The septic and water was, were the questions I had, and, and I guess if we get over 5,000 gallons, we're going to hear back from you. Is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, so the water, water appropriation permit through the state cannot be applied for until they, until we receive final plan approval.
I see.
So that will be sent off as soon as we can, as soon as we get to that stage.
Got it.
Michael, do you have any questions?
My only question was about, I guess, the business model. What, what are the levels of care that will be provided at the facility?
Level three care.
Which, tell me about that.
Steve Hurd, level three care, which is assisted care but not nursing care. Now, the patients can have additional nursing care hired or whatever is necessary. But the facility itself doesn't provide that. It goes through the, like, hospice care, whatever might be necessary for skilled nursing care.
Okay. Thank you.
Stephen, do you have any additional questions? You know, Janice does persuade me about, you know, I was raising the concern about the, the parking, but I, I do take your point. I think that's really, really important. So don't take my comments to say shave it back to 30. If you can get to 31, that's all right, but I think really on the other end, I mean, I... But I think really on the other end, I mean, I, I take the point, but, um, if at the same time you need to soften a turn or something and that takes out a parking spate, it seems, parking space, it seems to me you have some to work with.
Yeah.
So, I think we're, I think overall it's good. Um, in terms of, um, well, why don't we do this? Um, are there members of the public that would like to comment on this project? Is anyone here would like to comment on this? Okay. Looks like none. Um, in terms of, uh, giving authority to the chair to approve the final plan, I don't know how you all feel about that. We, there's some things we don't yet know that you still have to work through. It might, I know we don't want to hold up the project, and we don't certainly want to unnecessarily increase costs and time is money, and we understand all of that. Um, but I'll defer to the commission in terms of whether you'd like to see it again after we get more details, or whether the details that need to be worked out are things that you're not concerned about.
I would. And at that time, um, so we're looking at a concept plan.
This is the concept plan here.
Yeah, so we'll still see the final, right? And then we'll know...
Right.
...the details about water usage. We'll know exactly how the...
After this meeting, the developer will be able to submit the final plan for review. Once the final plan has received all approvals from all agencies, then it will be scheduled for the planning commission meeting. Or if you choose to forward it to the chair, then we'll just call the chair and set up a one-on-one meeting to show it to them. So that will be the last, the only and the last time this will need to go before the commission or the chair.
Okay.
I, I would still like to see it, I think.
I can see which way the tide's turning here, but, but I'm, but I'm still gonna, I'm still gonna put my two cents in if I may.
Certainly, of course.
Okay, and that is this. Um, what you're seeing here today, I think, I submit to you, you can take comfort in the fact that that's what the final site plan's gonna look like. The driveway's gonna be where it is, the entrance point's gonna be where it is, the buildings are gonna be where they are, there may be a softening of a curve, there may be a couple spaces removed, but that's what you're gonna see on the final, for sure. We've got concept, stormwater management approval. The, for instance, the, the water situation, which, uh, you know, you're rightly interested in, is a, is a health department matter. And when you, even if this, uh, it looks like, even if it comes back here for final, we won't have that answer yet because Mr. Ziegler just explained he can't even apply for that permit. So, whether or not the health department requires you to do something water-wise, it's not gonna change, uh, uh, this essential layout of this thing. Now, uh, so, that being said, I mean, if we, if we have to come back, it might cost us thirty to sixty days, uh, but I get it. Uh, if you'd like to see it again, you're gonna see it again.
Do you all want to see it?
Mr. Schaefer, I always enjoy your persuasive, um, comments, um, but I would like to see it back in...
You're not always persuaded by my persuasive comments.
I promise we will not incur thirty to sixty additional days.
Okay.
We're meeting every month, so if we can, when it's ready, if it can get to us right away, we certainly want to see it right away.
And we'll make sure it's on the agenda as a priority.
That sounds good. All right.
And by the way, I just want to say, I heard the two cents, so, so make sure the bill reflects that.
It'll be marked up.
Gentlemen, thank you all.
Thank you.
Kirsten, thank you very much. Nice presentation. Um, we're gonna move on to item ten, which is a recess, and so, um, why don't we come back at about, um, is five minutes enough, or do we need, why don't we take ten?
Five, yeah.
You think five's okay?
Yeah, let's five, okay.
Okay. Twenty after ten, we'll reconvene. Thank you all.
Everybody here? All right. We will reconvene our, uh, our meeting and we'll move on to item 11, which is a concept site plan. It's case number S-20-0014, New Beginnings Lot 1.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
AVB Craft, Bureau of Development Review. As mentioned, the next project we will be talking about this morning is New Beginnings Lot 1, S-20-0014. With me is Mr. Lemberman with RTF Associates. And what this project is proposing is an 8,700 square foot storage building. This project is before the commission as a concept plan. There is no action required. However, the planning commission may consider delegating approval of the final plan to the planning commission chair. This property is located at 2325 Fieser Road in Tawny Town, which is election district number one. You can see, uh, this is Fieser Road here. Here's Old Tawny Town Road and here is Maryland Route 140. Uh, the spaces where you do not see the brown tinge is currently, um, the city of Tawny Town municipality. So you can see the site is fairly close to the municipality line. The site itself is comprised of about 4.8 acres and is identified as lot number one within the New Beginning subdivision, which was recorded back in plat book 46, page 278. The property contains an existing residential structure, which is on the north side seen here, and a 5,600 square foot commercial slash industrial building, which you can see on the south side here. And it currently houses a construction company office. There are no streams or female 100-year floodplain designations located on site. You can see there is a stream north of the property right here. And, uh, as you can also see, there is existing access to Fieser Road, which is a county maintained road. So there's an access for the residential building here and then an access for the business here. Uh, the subject property is currently zoned industrial light with all adjoining properties being zoned agricultural. The property is surrounded by a mix of farms and single-use family residential properties, all utilizing private well and septic system. Property is roughly 2,200 feet from the city of Tawny Town corporate limits and is outside both the priority funding area and the designated growth area. So a little bit of background, uh, cause I'm sure there, there are some new commission members who may not be familiar with this, but this property was previously presented to the Planning Zoning Commission as a special report back in January of 2020. This simplified site plan was proposing the addition of a 54 by 54-foot concrete pad, touchdown, liftoff area to be used as a helicopter landing pad. Although the presentation to the Planning Zoning Commission is not code required for most simplified site plans, as that was something that we haven't really seen before, we wanted to bring it to the planning commission as more of an informational kind of thing and to get feedback from the commission on that use. Uh, with that, there were no citizens in attendance and there was no phone calls or letters that were received in reference to that helicopter use. So now what's being proposed, uh, is a 109 by 80-foot storage building that's going to be adjacent to the previously approved helicopter pad. So you can see the helicopter pad here and this is where the new building will be, here. The storage building will be for, um, essentially the storage of the property owner's helicopter. Uh, there will be a concrete pad that is going to connect the two, as you can see here. And the plan does not propose any changes to the existing buildings or any other existing operations on site. And I'm gonna go to the next slide here. So this is the, the elevation drawings of what's proposed. Uh, the building will have tan metal siding and a blue metal roof. And, um, when I get to the pictures later, I'll, I'll show pretty much exactly what that's going to look like. So this plan is exempt from the code requirements of flood, floodplain management. There are no design comments from the Carroll County Health Department with existing well and septic on site. The concept plan has received concept approval from Water Resource Review, Forest Conservation and Soil Conservation. Engineering Review and State Highway Administration have both approved the plan with existing access and the zoning office has approved the concept plan. Stormwater management has granted concept approval. Uh, they will be addressed through a combination of grading and submerged gravel wetlands. And finally, in accordance with a site development plan memorandum from the Department of Planning, the proposed land use is consistent with the 2014 Carroll County Master Plan land use designation of industrial light. And so, kinda how the property sits now, you can see the helicopter pad has been put in and is operational. Um, this space over here is where that building is going to go. And so in looking at this picture, building's gonna go right here. And then this is looking straight down to where the building's gonna go. And you can see, so this building here and also shown here is almost exactly the color scheme that's gonna be used for this new proposed storage building with the tan sides and then the blue roof. This is a shot at the existing industrial slash commercial building and then these three shots here are of the existing access. And again, this access is for the, the commercial side. This is not the pictures of the residential access point. And so with that, um, the final plan will be tested and reviewed for adequacy of public facilities in accordance with chapter 155 of code. If you have any questions, be happy to answer, uh, or Mr. Lemberman.
I don't have any questions. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, well, John, John Lemberman with RTF Associates, uh, 142 East Main Street. Um, the property owner couldn't be here because he's working. Um, this is for his personal helicopter because he does travel a lot for work. He currently, you know, travels to the airport at Carroll County, um, for, for that purpose. So this is just more of a convenience factor. Um, back in, when we did the simplified site plan for the helicopter pad, I, I do know he had some conversations with the state police as far as the medevac accessing it, you know, and having availability to it. I don't know the end result of those conversations or where that stands, but, um, to date, we have no, you know, opposition from neighbors or anything. So that's, um, the only thing left on the site plan as far as, as prove, major approvals are concerned is just the final construction plans on the stormwater facility, which will be a gravel, uh, submerged gravel wetlands just because of the soil types and shallow bedrock up there. Um, and on behalf of the owner myself, I would like to ask the board to consider, um, having the chair sign off on this final site plan once all the final site approvals are, are achieved. Um, mainly just because there's, it's really not a high intensity use, I don't think as far as public is concerned.
Right. No, it seems very straightforward. It's, you know, it seems like a reasonable use of a person's own land, so I really don't have any questions. Anybody have any questions?
No. I, um, think every helicopter should have its own spot. But seriously, on, on a real note, um, the, it, it's better for the wear and tear of something, a plane helicopter to be housed in someplace, so I don't see any issue with it.
Thank you. Given my recent experience with the airports, I'd like to have my own helicopter too. Any members of the public have any comment on this particular project? Seeing none. Um, and, uh, on, on this kind of a project, do, does the commission have to vote to authorize the chair to execute or is that already?
Yes.
Am I authorized? Okay. So would someone like to make a motion that I'm authorized to execute on the final plan?
I move we accept the plan and authorize the chair to approve it when it's final.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion to second that, uh, the commission is delegating approval of the final site plan to the planning commission chair. Any further discussion? Just all in favor?
Aye.
All right. That sounds unanimous to me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thank you. We're on to item 12. Um, this is a preliminary subdivision plan. This is case number P-20-0071, Byron Hills.
AVB Craft, back before you again, Bureau of Development Review, um, as mentioned, by the chair. Next project we, we'll be talking about is Byron Hills, file number P-20-0071. Uh, with me are some representatives from CLSI.
Martin Rickel, CLSI.
Aaron Valentine, CLSI.
And what this project is proposing is a four-lot residential subdivision. This project is before you as a preliminary subdivision plan, which means we are looking for two actions at this time, uh, one of which is the approval of the preliminary plan subject to chapter 155 and denial of the preliminary plan in reference to chapter 156. And we'll, we'll get into that a little later. Uh, so for those who are unfamiliar, this project is located on the east side of Oklahoma Road, north of Monroe Avenue. So here's Oklahoma Road here. It's not labeled, but here is Monroe Avenue right here. Here's 26. Here's 32. The subject property is currently undeveloped, zoned R-20,000 and lies on the east side of Oklahoma Road in Eldersburg, Maryland. There are no streams or female 100-year floodplain designations located on site. From Oklahoma Road, the site slopes upwards to the southeastern property line. So as you're looking at the site, it slopes upward, looking this way, uh, with approximately 36 vertical feet of elevation change.
Yeah.
Adjacent properties are zoned R-20,000 and are developed with single-family homes and are served by public water and sewer systems. On December 11th, 2020, a concept subdivision plan for Byron Hills was submitted to the Bureau of Development Review and distributed to technical review agencies. Uh, this is what was provided. Within the subdivision plan, the developer proposes to create four new lots of subdivision in a non-residential parcel around the stormwater management facility. The four new lots will range in size from roughly 3/4 of an acres to about .9 acres. And the stormwater management parcel will be roughly a half acre and that will be located here. So this is the stormwater management facility. All proposed lots meet the standard minimum size of 20,000 square feet, lot width of 100 feet and setback requirements from all property lines as applicable to the R-20,000 zoning district outline and Carroll County Code. All lots shown on the plan will utilize public water and sewer. Access to the lots is proposed from an existing driveway from Oklahoma Road. So I'm gonna go back one. So they're proposing the access from this existing driveway here. Um, as this will be a shared use and common driveway, they will have to bring this existing driveway to use in common driveway standards. A declaration of maintenance obligations and an access easement for the shared drive will need to be recorded. That will be handled during the, the final, um, recordation. To obtain adequate site distance where the new driveway meets Oklahoma Road, the developer has established an agreement with the southern adjoining property, um, not this property, but with this property here, um, which allows the necessary grading on the property to occur. So they have a, a temporary grading or, or construction easement with that property owner. The proposed subdivision plan was subject to citizen involvement during the January 25th, 2021 Technical Review Committee meeting. There were four citizens in attendance and they expressed concerns of stormwater runoff and soil erosion, soil chemical composition and school capacity during the meeting. Two adjoining property owners, both of which spoke at the meeting, they also emailed and mailed their concerns in advance of that meeting. On August 17th, 2021, the Planning Zoning Commission received, or I'm sorry, reviewed the concept plan for this project. During that meeting, there were various concerns, uh, raised by the naming property owners regarding stormwater runoff, school capacity and local wildlife habitat. There were three emails that were received after the meeting, those of which were included with your packets. Uh, yesterday I also received another email from an adjoining property and I believe it also was forwarded to your guys' emails as well. Uh, she had concerns about school capacity as well as, um...
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. Thank you. And right when I went to say it, it just, out the brain. Um, and we'll, we'll get into that conversation a little further into the report, but both of those concerns, um, will be addressed. So with that, uh, stormwater management has issued preliminary plan approval. Uh, they are utilizing dry wells and a proposed stormwater management facility that will meet the requirements of stormwater management. Water resources, zoning and grading and sediment control have approved the preliminary plan. The Carroll County Health Department and the Carroll County Bureau of Utilities have approved the plan with public water and sewer connections proposed. Engineering Review and State, State Highway Administration have approved the plan as well. In the review, the Department of Planning determined that the proposed plan is consistent with the 2018 Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation of Residential Medium and as well as the Water and Sewer Master Plan. As Oklahoma Road is identified as a future sidewalk connection within the bike pad master plan, planning staff included a recommendation to construct sidewalks along Oklahoma Road in order to connect the existing sidewalk on the north and south side of the property. So I'm gonna go back here. So you can see the terminus of this sidewalk on the north side as well as the sidewalk on the south side. So pursuant to chapter 155, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan, uh, subject to the following conditions. That the owner developer enters into a public works agreement with Carroll County. That a declaration of maintenance obligations for the use in common driveway serving lots 1, 2, 3 and 4 to the proposed lots, as well as the adjoining property at 5995 Oklahoma Road, which is this property here, be recorded. That the parcel shown on the plans as parcel A be recorded, um, and deeded to Carroll County. That the parcel shown on the plans as parcel B be deeded to Carroll County. Both of those are road widening parcels. The parcel A will be here and then parcel B will be over on this side as well. That the parcel shown on the plans as stormwater management facility be deeded to the homeowners' association. That any area labeled as storm drain easement be deeded to the homeowners' association. Any area labeled as stormwater management easement be deeded to the homeowners' association. That a stormwater management easement and maintenance agreement be deeded to Carroll County. That a sidewalk be added along Oklahoma Road to the maximum extents possible, so maximum legal extents possible. So as you can see, um, we have two other, um, owned privately, prop, other privately-owned properties here and here, um, that kind of, they may or may not, um, keep the sidewalks from being connected. So, um, one of the things that we have tasked CLSI with is to verify that we have enough road designation for Oklahoma Road for us to, to have that sidewalk within the current county right of way without having to impede on the private properties here. So that is something that will be addressed, uh, during the final review of this project. And then finally, um, any changes to the preliminary plan as subject and approved by the commission shall be re-submitted to the commission for further review and approval. And before we move on, um, just to kinda show the layout of the property, so as you can tell, us being in August, um, these pictures were not taken in August. There was too much growth in that area at this point to take, uh, any recent pictures. Uh, but this shows the lay of the land standing up where those lots will be. And again, so this is looking at some of the residential properties as they currently sit now. This is right where that stormwater management facility will be located. And these are updated pictures. So this is looking, uh, at the existing driveway, uh, left and right on Oklahoma Road and this is looking back on site. Here's some more shots from Oklahoma Road. And this is, so you can see this, um, this red fire hydrant here on the south side of the site. Nor, sorry, north side of the site, this is the terminus of the sidewalk. And this is where that stormwater management facility will be located and you can almost see that red fire hydrant here. So before we move on to the concurrency management report, um, was there any questions in reference to that first half of the report that was?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay. So we will move on to concurrency management. So pursuant to chapter 156 of code, Carroll County Code, once the department has determined that the residential development plan may be presented to the commission, the plan is reviewed for available threshold capacities. Uh, with this, various agencies or, uh, public services are looked at to determine if this residential development will have, um, adverse effects on those facilities. And so we're gonna go through each one. So for police services, um, the ratio was calculated by counting sworn officers with law enforcement responsibility, uh, in relation to the Carroll County population. Um, it was determined that including the development projects in the pipeline along with the funded positions, the ratio will be over 1.3. Uh, services are adequate if the projected ratio is 1.3 to 1,000, which it was over that. So police services was deemed adequate. For schools, the proposed subdivision is located in the Freedom Elementary, Oklahoma Road Middle and Liberty High attendance areas. In accordance with Carroll County Code, Oklahoma Road Middle and Liberty High are rated adequate for fiscal years 2023 to 2028. Freedom Elementary is rated approaching inadequate for fiscal years 2023 and inadequate for fiscal years 2024 to 2028. Based on the numbers from the 2022 to 2031 Educational Facilities Master Plan document that was approved by the Board of Ed at their June 8th, 2022 meeting, uh, it was determined that Freedom Elementary had an actual enrollment of 114.1%. You're approaching inadequate if you're at 110% to 119%. So already their actual enrollment is approaching inadequate. And looking at the numbers, um, 2023, as mentioned, was approaching and then after that, it, it's deemed inadequate. Although there are no improvements scheduled in the current approved capital improvement program, which will provide capacity, Bill Kane, the facilities planner for the Board of Ed, indicated on their certification form that the Southeast Area Redistricting Committee will be presenting options to the Board of Ed this year. So although there's not currently anything, any mitigation now, that may soon change once those options are presented to the Board of Ed. And then as mentioned, um, Oklahoma Road Middle and Liberty High are both deemed adequate, uh, below that 109% capacity. For fire and EMS, the proposed subdivision is located in the Sykesville Fire and EMS District. Uh, Sykesville is rated adequate for late and no responses criteria for fire and EMS as well as average response times. The primary route from the firehouse to the proposed development does not include travel over bridges, um, that cannot adequately support fire and EMS apparatus, so that is also deemed adequate. So fire and EMS for this area is adequate on all counts. Uh, Oklahoma Road, which is the county road impacted by this, is also deemed adequate. And finally, um, the Bureau of Utilities rated the services as adequate for water and sewer in this area. With that, uh, with regards to a preliminary plan, the Carroll County Code states, and I'm just gonna read this verbatim, "If a public facility or service is inadequate or projected to be inadequate during the current CIP at the preliminary plan stage and no relief facility is planned in a six-year CIP to address the inadequacy or no mitigation is accepted by the county pursuant to chapter 156, oh, six, B, the plan shall be denied by the commission. At the request of the developer, the plan may be placed in a queue and retested on an annual basis." So with that, pursuant to chapter 156, staff recommends that the planning commission find that police, roads, fire and EMS services are considered adequate, schools are considered inadequate, and thus deny the preliminary plan and at the developer's request, allow the plan to be placed in a queue and retested on an annual basis. So I just wanna clarify with that, um, because the school, Freedom Elementary, is deemed inadequate within the current CIP, um, the planning commission has to deny it for a chapter 156. That's not to say that the plan cannot move forward to the final plan stage. They can still be reviewed under the final plan stage, but they cannot receive final approval until some sort of mitigation is put in place.
Can you read back? I think you were saying-
I think you were saying pursuant to chapter 156, staff recommends the planning commission deny the preliminary plan and at the developer's request, it be placed in a queue, and then I missed the rest of that.
Sorry, be placed in a queue and retested on an annual basis.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
That's all I got.
Gentlemen, do you have anything to add to the presentation?
We're just here to answer questions and do requests that we get placed in the queue.
All right. So one of the issues that's been raised by the community, not surprisingly, given the slope of the ground deals with stormwater runoff. Can you address that sort of preemptively now and explain why if you were a neighbor that was downhill from this, you wouldn't be concerned about that?
Basically, if you can look to the right, left of the bottom house, there's a swale cutting off all water getting down to the main house. There's a swale between the other two houses going to inlets that were capturing all the water in that area, and then the major swale cutting water off there. So we've cut water off pretty much everything going down towards Oklahoma. And then on the other side, towards Rustic Rising, we put another swale in and we've cut off all the water going there. So we've pretty much surrounded the site with swales to keep the water from going off property. Goes to the stormwater facility, which ties into a storm drain system, existing storm drain system. So the water will be conveyed through pipes.
And how do you, without getting into too much detail, because I'm certainly not an engineer, but how do you ensure that you understand what the capacity of water is that's coming down that hill and that this swale and that this system that you've designed is going to have the capacity to handle it?
We're required to design for what they call the tenure storm for stormwater management. And then on top of that, provide nine inches to a foot of freeboard so you even have additional storage there or volume there to be able to handle if any additional gets in there. So it's designing above for a tenure storm, but then also putting freeboarder on top of it to protect them.
And then, once you do this design, does the county check on your calculations?
Absolutely.
Okay, and has that process been undertaken?
Yes, they went through, we went through concept and preliminary, and then they'll look at it again at final to make sure.
And there also, has there been a Phase 1 environmental study done?
That I am not sure of.
When we were here before, there was some discussion about a potential Phase 1 environmental study.
I would, I apologize, the client can't be here today, but I can double check with him on that. But typically, they just walk out and see what they see on site. There's no subsurface excavation on that.
I'm not suggesting there should be. I just, when looking back through the minutes from before, there was a...
Most of the time to get financing, they're required to do a Phase 1.
Okay, so there may have been one, we just don't know right now.
In talking about the stormwater runoff, at the end of, when construction, doesn't the county come back out and verify that it's all done according to what it should be?
We will be required to be on-site and do inspections during the construction, and then the county will also do an inspection at the end to make sure we meet all the criteria.
Okay, and if you don't, you're...
We revise it.
I, well, I do. So, and I can't see totally, but where it's coming around there. So it looks like there's a space that may not be being funneled. Am I seeing that wrong, or is it everything coming down the hill?
We've cut off the majority of it. Some of it coming down the road, we'll still get down the road, but we've significantly reduced the drainage tray getting down to Oklahoma Road, which shows a decrease in runoff based on even the county, you know, reviews.
Okay.
Do you have any additional questions?
The developer of the two homes that front Oklahoma that are presently there, is that the same developer of these four homes?
No, sir.
Was that a no or a yes?
No.
I guess I'm frustrated that the sidewalk was not done when those first two homes were built and that now we're legally, because at some point, the county's going to have to go in there and do something to connect these sidewalks. And it's just a frustration of everybody who lives in that area.
Yeah, I believe they were taking up all conveyances at the time, which is a different process. We will strongly look at what we can do to connect the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's certainly a priority for us, you know, over the years as these things have developed. You end up with a bunch of sidewalks that aren't connected, but the idea is as the development continues, they eventually all get connected.
Understand.
So these need to get connected.
Unfortunately, our developer came in after the fact on that.
Right. Michael?
No, I'm fine.
Steven?
No, everything's been asked.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment? Please come forward, step up to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Slavjova. I live in an adjoining property, 5960 Amin Court. I'm from the Rustic Rising community. We're really concerned about a few things. Thank you for mentioning the water downfall, because we live down the hill, and hill is very steep. So I don't think that whatever developers will try to do will fix the issue, because hill belongs to the Rustic Rising community. So the edge of a hill belongs to Rustic Rising, and part of it belongs to ours, like little tip of that land. So we won't be able to ground it properly to the lowest level. Second concern is when we're going to build something, if we're going to build something there, it's going to be a problem during the construction, because all the, all the, you know, stuff, all the dirt, everything will go down the hill to our properties. And the third concern we have is about environmental issue, because we were trying to look for all the documents. Unfortunately, it was a long time ago before the internet era, so it wasn't really documented on sites. But from old folks who live there, we know that there used to be a farm, and the ostriches were running around, and the old farmer, apparently, I cannot prove unfortunately all those things, but we were told those ostriches, some of them at least, were buried. And you could see some in the woods when it is not that many vegetation. You could go there and see buried stuff, like buried building, like leftovers from some other stuff, like basically it's trash. And people saying it is a burial of remains of those ostriches, and God knows what else there. So nobody ever tested anything there. So if it's going to be excavated, we want to make sure that we won't get all these, those chemicals or whatever is buried there going down the hill to us. Another concern, of course, schools, because schools, but it's already been raised. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Can you state your name, your name, please? Can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, my name, Krios Slavjov, I'm husband. So, and whenever it's rain, we pretty much have a river of mud going through our parking lot. So I don't see how it's going to be any better with construction site instead of a forest uphill. That's it. Thank you.
May I address?
Let me just see if there are any other comments, and we'll address them all. Anyone else care to comment? All right, yes, sir, go ahead.
The area to the north with the swale that's proposed there, that would be cut in during initial construction to divert all water coming off of our site round into a trap to prevent it from going onto their site. As far as the slope on Rustic Rising down to their property, we have no control over that, but we can keep the water from our site off of their property.
And you're saying that it's going to get cut in, that's at the beginning of this process? So that during construction...
That would be, for the first thing, is to cut it in to divert the water around. So it does not get off the property and it goes to the proper treatment area.
Because certainly we've seen issues where during construction, there's runoff because the stormwater management system isn't done yet. And I think that's one of the concerns I think they're raising is during construction, before the stormwater management system is complete, what can you do to keep water from running down?
Yes, sir, and actually, part of Stormwater Management Now review is during the interim during construction, they look at that to make sure we're taking care of it before it goes off our site.
And then, I'm sorry, Janice.
Oh, can you address the concern about the environmental?
This site is pretty much like any other farm site or out there. No one knows what's buried on a lot of these farms when you go in to do your construction, unfortunately. And as far as I know, there's no testing or studies required for development. Besides, you know, with your Phase 1 for the financing. But other than that, there's no requirements I'm aware of.
Okay, and being in development somewhat, I am aware that maybe back in the 50s and 40s, homeowners buried stuff.
Yes.
So hopefully, what was buried may have disintegrated, but during construction, they will unearth some stuff and take care of...
It'll have to be handled properly if it is, and it is exposed.
Okay.
So back to my question about a Phase 1, do we know if, is there going to be a Phase 1?
I do not know the answer.
Or we don't know if that's required or...
Usually, you don't see it with residential, and even the banks, you know, unless they feel that there is a problem, but it's typical with farm. And I would suspect the development above probably was farmland before too.
It was.
So they...
All right. All right, any other questions in light of...
Just curious, is there, concerning the water and the public comment and the runoff, is there a way to install the stormwater management prior to, you know, digging foundations and things like that?
In place of the set stormwater facility, there'll be a sediment trap there, which acts as temporary stormwater management. The water will be diverted into that and released also. It'll just then be converted to the final facility at the end. But during the interim, it'll be a sediment base and sediment trap. The water will all be diverted in the same way we're talking about now, probably even more so with some earth dikes and such to keep the water going in. So during the interim, yes, we will be diverting the water into some type of facility there.
And when they are actually constructing the houses, they'll have on-site for each house some type of...
Either they have to have something on-site for each house, or this perimeter, sediment controls need to stay in place until the houses are built.
Okay.
So we asked the question earlier, guess the county has checked your numbers and you kind of, you go, yeah, they've checked your numbers on the stormwater runoff. You know, in this instance, only because I'm familiar with the topography of this site, to me, it's not just the volume of water, it's the velocity that it might be coming off that hill. I mean, if we get a heavy wet rainfall, you know, and so David, I guess I'm asking you, when you review their work or your team reviews their work, I mean, are the pipes larger? Because again, the amount, it's not just the amount of water, it's, I think it's the speed that it can come down off that hill, because this is, it's a 5 or 6% grade.
Right, so I guess my answer to that would be, you know, there's a reason why we wait until receiving stormwater management approval before any plan, it's before the planning commission.
Okay.
Because the requirements for that are a lot of times what holds a lot of projects up, because they want to check and double check to make sure it meets state requirements as well as county requirements.
Okay.
If it's felt that the velocity is too much, I'm sure they would have put some sort of rocks in place of dirt, you know, if they're worried about it cutting into or creating more of a ditch or channelization as it was. I can't speak as to the design of this, because I don't necessarily review for that. But I can say that, you know, there's a lot of checks and balances in place for this.
And I guess maybe as we close this out, you know, we certainly hear the concerns and recognize them and appreciate them. If we were you, we'd have the same, have exactly the same concerns. And the concerns that you raise here are concerns we see on other projects. And, you know, the county has a process that they follow that's checked and double-checked. The engineers have to submit and do the calculations. Nothing's ever perfect. I like to think, as members of the community, which is what we all are, that if the engineers were scamming us, or the county were scamming us, saying they're taking care of these things, but they're really not, then we'd see a pattern of those things happening. And certainly, if this project goes forward and all the systems fail and all of the representations that are made aren't, you know, aren't being honored, or then we would certainly be hearing about that either anecdotally or directly. And then the next time they come in and reckon, and they're making representation to us, the question would be, why should we believe you? So I, you know, you gentlemen are professionals, you have professional licenses, we rely on what you do as professionals, and the same with the county. And so that's, that's the way the system works. It needs to work. And if problems develop, then they have to be resolved while you're out there to protect the community. And if that's not happening, then, then I think we're going to be hearing about that. But the expectation is that this will work, and it will deal with these issues. So, so we hear you and we understand the concern and are satisfied, I think, that these are being addressed in every way that they can be.
And if I may chime in one more time, so one of the documents that is required with any subdivision, with anything that has any type of stormwater management practices on it, is a stormwater management easement and maintenance agreement. So these facilities will be continually inspected. If it's determined that for some reason, something doesn't work, or something is getting to the point where there's concern, then there is the chance to essentially redline or make changes to that, so that way it can be mitigated before something occurs. And also, a lot of what's put in place here is for the subdivision as a whole, but there will be additional stormwater management review when each individual building permit comes in. So if a building permit comes in that has the building shifted one way, or maybe it's oriented a different way, or it's a bigger size, then additional stormwater management practices may be put on-site for that building in place. So, you know, there's a lot of, especially with stormwater management, you know, there's a lot of concern of keeping that water on that site and not adversely any of the adjoining properties.
Right, and it's not a one and done, you know, go out, check it one day and say, okay, we're finished, and if it fails, the next day, you're, you know, it's not your problem.
All right.
So, what Siri thinks?
I don't know how she caught all that.
So we have before us two action items. One is approval of the preliminary plan's subdivision pursuant to chapter 155, and we have a staff recommendation that it be approved subject to 10 conditions. And then we have a recommendation that approval of the preliminary plan of subdivision pursuant to chapter 156 be rejected because of the schools. So why don't we take them one at a time? Is there a motion to approve the preliminary plan of subdivision pursuant to chapter 155 subject to the 10 conditions listed in the staff report?
Can I take a stab at that? You want me to take, can I do this?
Sure, you can.
Yeah, that is a good question. We know I can't. I move we approve the plan subject to chapter 156 and the recommendation, pardon me, 155, and the 10 recommendations provided by staff.
Okay, 10 conditions.
10 conditions, did I say 10?
Yes, there are conditions.
10 conditions.
Okay, very good.
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the preliminary plan of subdivision pursuant to chapter 155, subject to the 10 conditions listed in the staff report, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All right, is the voice photo okay or doing?
Yes, that's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to oppose or abstain? That passes unanimously.
Then I move that we deny the plan because of chapter 156, but we allow the plan to be placed in a queue on an annual basis to be reviewed. And that would be subject to the four stipulations, recommendations made by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to reject the preliminary plan of subdivision pursuant to chapter 156, but that the, at the developer's request, it be placed in a queue and retested on an annual basis. And there are four conditions listed in the staff report. And we have a second. And we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a question. I realize that the motion made just said plan should be amended to say preliminary plan, or does it?
It does, it's, it's okay the way it's.
Okay. Any other discussions?
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just, just a question about denying the plan for retesting on an annual basis. Is there any, is there a possibility to increase that frequency or lessen that frequency?
I think the code requirement just says annual, so it's annual.
But if, if something, I'm...
I mean, I'm sure the property owner could come in.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, right, within that annual time, but I'm just saying like...
We have a staff member who may be able to answer that question.
So the redistricting committee, both Linda Eismerga and myself have been a part of that redistricting committee that the school is leading. And so we have closed tabs on their timeline and what they're doing and when they're doing it. So it is our intent that as soon as the board has, has given a directive as to, this is the option that we want to pursue that you've put in front of us, then we will come back before you with any plan like this that has been put into that queue at such a point in time that we feel that that is mitigation that could be acceptable to the county, even though it is not fully enacted yet, they have a plan in place to move forward. So that, that is what you would see back before you per 156 to say, okay, we can move forward now.
Good.
Okay?
The inadequacy has been corrected.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Thank you all very much, thank you all very much. We are moving on to item 13, which is a recess, and we'll just take a five-minute recess and see you back here in five minutes. Thank you.
Welcome back, everybody. We are on to item 14, Final Site Plan, case number S-160005, Didi World Business Center.
Thank you. Laura Mathias with the Bureau of Development Review, and I'm going to be absolutely honest, I am thrilled to be here with this project today. There's a lot of people who are very excited to be here today. It's a S-160005, which means that this current plan came into us in 2016. So it's been a long time coming. It has a history dating further back than that even, and I'll present that in the report. I did go back and watch the, this was here before you, in August, August 31st of 2016, I watched the video. Mr. Weathers, you were in it, I was in it. The rest of the commission is all different, right? And I almost jokingly just embedded the video into the PowerPoint because most of what you'll hear today, I could have, it's about 95% of that same report. But I will go back thoroughly through this project, where it's been, where it's heading. But before I do that, I want to let everybody here introduce themselves. And they have changed developers, which was part of, the project actually stalled in the final review process for a while because there was a change of hands. So maybe you could speak to that as well, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves and giving that portion of it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good morning. Kelly Schaefer Miller, 73 East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland, 21157. I'm here today again on behalf of the developer. The developer is sitting next to me. It's Scott Hare. His name is Scott Hare. And he did purchase the property from Randy Cohen, who I'm not certain how many of you remember, but it sounds like perhaps just Mr. Weathers would recall that Randy previously owned the site and had initiated this site plan. And then, I can't remember exactly when Scott purchased it, but Scott actually, and he can answer specific questions that you might have, but Scott owns one of the other businesses and properties on Didi Road. So then, you know, he was aware of this property, knew about it, and ultimately purchased it from Randy, and then has continued the site plan. And then I'll let everybody introduce themselves. But John and Christina are here from Fox and Associates, and they had been working on the plan when Randy had applied for the site plan initially as well. So they have a longer even history than Scott does on working with the site plan.
Very good.
I'll let you guys individually introduce yourselves.
I'm Scott Hare. I'm the developer. I also, as Kelly had stated, have a business right across the street that I've owned and operated in the county for 33 years now. We have a site development company there. We've watched this parcel. We saw Randy kind of stall with it and saw the opportunity to kind of pick up the pieces and try to move it forward. Feel like it'll be a good addition to that piece of the county there.
Very good.
That's much needed.
Well, it's nice to have you here today.
My name's Christina Castillo with Fox and Associates. Like Kelly said, we've worked on this project from 2016. I was actually the junior project manager at the time. And when Scott took it over and reinvented it, I started to work on it again. So like Laura said, we're happy to see it finally at this stage.
Very good.
Hi, good morning. John Mizelen with Fox and Associates. I too have been involved with the project from 2015 forward. We're happy to be here before you today. Thank you.
Well, welcome, everybody. Laura, I guess we'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, everybody. So the location for the site is, we're out in Finksburg. So Baldmore 140 and Didi Road, some of you may be familiar with that area. The property itself, interestingly enough, it was, it's part of this Walnut Park industrial subdivision. So it was initially platted back in 1987, and it's vacant. It's still vacant. And then they re-subdivided that parcel in 2014. So it's pretty a prominent site right here on 140, and you'll recall, well, Mr. Weathers, you may recall it, concept we did talk about, this is kind of a gateway into, it's a corridor, it's a gateway corridor into the county. So there was discussion about that and what this looks like, et cetera. So we are here today for approval of a final site plan. I will note, one addition to the report under owners, we do list the LLC members, and following the publishing of the report, I did talk to Kim, and Kimberly Hare is also a member of the LLC, Azalea LLC. So if you could please note that. Thank you. You'll also see, interestingly enough, and it coincides with the date of submittal. So this is being processed under the BG zoning district, business, general business. That district, of course, has evolved. It no longer exists when we did that comprehensive rezoning in December 2019 is when those changed, and now we have commercial industrial zones. So the map itself, you'll see the Cs and the I districts, but this plan is actually being processed under the BG zoning that was in place at the time when it was brought into us. Okay. So again, we're comprised of two properties with a total acreage of 5.4 acres. So the two lots, Lot 11A and Lot 12 of the industrial park, Walnut Park industrial subdivision. Okay, the access for this, I'm going to flip to the, so the access for this is provided there's a plat attached to your package, and you'll see that there is access onto Didi Road, which is intended. Okay? And then Lot 11A, which is, I'm not quite sure what to call this, it's a bowtie, maybe? So it's here at the road, it has a narrow strip back to this portion right here, and a narrow strip out to Didi Road. So with the plat, they had put an ingress egress easement over Lot 12 for Lot 11, 11A. Okay? So it's kind of shaped a little funny, but you'll go, as we go through the plans, you'll see that the, this is all on well and septic. We are out in the Finksburg area. So of course, to do a development of this scope on well and septic, there's been a lot of coordination with the Health Department on that. There are two septic fields and wells associated, and so the location of one of the septic fields is actually that upper part of the bowtie there. So funny configuration of the lot. So Lot 11A, that access easement I was just talking about, it actually corresponds with a 40-foot service road easement for future public ingress and egress. And that was put on the plat that you'll see in your package, and it is on the Finksburg corridor plan. It's a planned service road that goes through that Walnut Park area. And we'll talk about where that is in the process and how this plan is, affects that at this point in time. So the service road easement was established on the 1987 plat, carried forward the 2014 plat, and there are some changes being recommended with this plan in regards to that easement. So the vacant, the subject property you'll see is vacant, as I said, and it slopes gently downhill to the east. There is a grade change at this property line, which creates a steep slope there between Lot 12, which is the larger lot, and the Watts Center, which is adjoining to the east. All right. So I'm going to go all the way back, well, I'll show you some pictures of the site first for context. So looking along Route 26 in either direction, and you'll see adjoining immediately to the west of this property is a one-story brick building. That's where the postal service used to operate out of in Finksburg until they relocated.
That's actually 140.
It's vacant, yeah, it's 140, not 26.
What did I say?
26.
That's okay, we're ready.
It looks like 26.
You didn't catch it? 140, thank you. All right. And then standing internal to the site, looking at 140, and again, you'll see that one-story brick building. This is along Didi Road, so just to give you a general idea, there are some businesses built up on the opposite side of Didi Road. And this is again along Didi Road. So on the right-hand side, you're looking into the site. The back of the site does have a tree line to it right now.
And CJ Miller back behind.
Yes, and CJ Miller joins back there.
Mudgeet's auto is there.
Exactly. All right. So I'm going to go all the way back to 2011, when the planning commission did see a plan for this site. And ironically enough, it really hasn't changed much. At that point in time, it was still two distinct buildings, it was a planned business center, and a restaurant and/or bank was proposed. Again, just giving you a little context of the history of it. It was presented as a concept plan to the planning commission. At that point in time, the property had not been re-subdivided, so it was one lot with two uses on it. And they didn't move forward with a final site plan for that, but they did move forward and re-subdivide the lot in 2014. So actually, the uses, the building dimensions, the sighting, access, stormwater, pretty much all these elements are substantially the same as going all the way back to 2011. So the uses that are proposed now, this plan, a planned business center, and at the front, the proposed use is a fast food restaurant, a restaurant, okay? And they are principal permitted uses in the BG zoning district, again, processing under BG. So it's a new plan. It was reinvigorated in 2016, and a concept plan came in in May of 2016. We did go to the technical review committee with it. We had three citizens there, but since posting this project now, we, I have not heard from any citizens regarding the plan. Again, in August of 2016, you saw this as a concept plan. Now, there was, most of the discussion revolved around parking. So there was a lot of extraneous parking that was proposed on the property. There were 42 extra spaces in total. So the conversation was, you know, can we reduce the park? Can you reduce the parking, maybe add green space in lieu of that? The other part of the conversation was surrounding the, it being a gateway into the county. And the commission requested that the developer just be attentive to the signage that is put onto the final site plan proposed, as well as the building elevations, right? Because it's a prominent location. So all of those concerns have been addressed on the final plans. So I'll go into exactly how they did that, what they did. But bigger picture, they are proposing that planned business center, it's a, there's one building, two stories, 30,000 square feet, and in it will be proposed as retail, professional offices, medical offices, really not quite sure what that mix will look like specifically, okay? And then a 3,753 square foot fast food restaurant. So it's being processed as one development plan, two lots, one plan for Didi World Business So there's no access proposed to Maryland Route 140. The access is, 140. The access is proposed to Didi Road. Again, there's an easement for 11A, and then the actual road, access road is on Lot 12. So right here, coming in. There's a second access point here, proposed further north on Didi Road. So interestingly, the topography of the site led the engineer to, there's a retaining wall. It's about 30 feet long, which runs along the access drive on the south side of that access drive. And in order to put that in, actually construct it, have the room to do that, and there's landscaping that is required along with that retaining wall, in order to do that, everything kind of shifted north a little bit to accommodate those features. So what happened was that the actual easement that was put in place on the plat, they are also processing an amended plat. It's going to shift that easement to align with the road, okay? Because the whole road had to shift over to the north just slightly. So that's one of the things they're doing with the amended plat. It doesn't affect the access to Lot 11 will still be over that access road, they just had to slide the easement. So again, going back to what happens over here, this property line, there are steep slopes, and at the concept, before you even saw the concept plan, so during the concept review and the technical agencies, the engineer did provide us sufficient information to demonstrate that that connection for that planned future road across here, connecting to that Watts Center property, it just, it couldn't be realized because of the steep slopes there, okay? So what you saw at concept looks like this. There was no connection at that point in time, we did talk about it at that point in time. It just simply wasn't achievable with the grade change. So this then instigated further review of that greater road, right? And what happens on this plan, and what will happen with that greater service road that's planned. So while we're not looking at the entirety of the service road, we are focused on what happens with this site plan right now. So we, the Department of Land and Resource Management, in coordination with Department of Planning, as well as the Department of Public Works, reviewed this segment, okay? So the recommendation was that this segment of the Walnut Park Road over Lot 12 be removed from the Finksburg plant. And pairing with that, so the Department of Planning is undergoing right now a transportation plan. And you will see in front of you, I think Mary's going to present it, before the end of this year, she will be before you with all the recommendations that go along with that transportation plan. And you will find that this removal across Lot 12 of that future service road aligns with what will be presented to you in relation to that entire service road for that area. It was determined that it is unwarranted, that the properties it would serve and the potential traffic that it might alleviate, it was determined that it should be removed from the plan. So you'll see that when, Mary's before you. Hi. So, but for this plan, with the approval of this development plan and the recordation of the associated amended plat, that easement area for the service road on Lot 12 on this portion, and this portion of the road extension will be considered removed and extinguished. So we are asking you to, that's part of your consideration today, is that you are A-OK with that, okay? So planned business centers need to meet general regulations required in the code. So building height, the building height is, the bulk requirement is 50 feet, cannot be taller than 50 feet. The building shown in your plan set is 43 foot four and a half inches, okay? So we're within the building height regulations. They're also within their yard setback regulations. Tract coverage as well, they're permitted up to 25% tract coverage, and this is 19%. And we're talking about the planned business center. And the customer parking spaces. So as we talked about, there were extraneous parking spaces on the concept plan. The parking requirements for that planned business center total 165 spaces. Okay. At, now, six of the spaces on that property are serving the restaurant. So for the restaurant portion, they couldn't get all their parking on there, so they're establishing a cross easement and permitting six of those spaces on the adjoining property. So the plan right now, they have reduced that number, there are now 25 extra spaces versus the 42 extra spaces that you saw at concept. So they have taken out parking spaces, they have added, in your response to add more green, some of the islands have gotten wider, they did have to add a loading zone, which is here, which wasn't shown on the concept plan, so that accounts for some of those parking spaces. But they also, in response to your comments, have included plantings, planters around the entire perimeter of each, each building, the fast food restaurant as well, I believe, but around the planned business center. I keep wanting to say commercial, because now it's a commercial center in the code. Planned business center. So they have done what they could to increase the green and remove parking. Now, they didn't go all the way, dial it all the way down to just the required spaces because as of now, they're still not sure what those actual uses will be that move into the building, so they wanted that buffer, that little bit of extra. But it was responsive to the commission's comments. And additionally, they have shown their signage, oh, building elevations. And then I have a slide of the signage. So they have shown signage, of course, the one on the left is kind of generic right now because they're not quite sure what restaurant will be going in there. It does show a height of 30 feet for that particular sign, which is the maximum permitted by code. And then the, I was going to say bulkier sign, but the more substantial sign, which will list all the tenants in that commercial center for Didi World, that sign is 20 foot eight inches high and eight feet wide. So I'm going to go back to, we'll leave it there for a second. So the plan, the plan was subject to a traffic impact study. It was reviewed by the State Highway Administration as well as Carroll County. There are, there was a road dedication parcel that was required by State Highway along Maryland Route 140. That's already been dedicated, deeded to SHA, and there are no additional improvements that are necessitated. I will say that they are elongating the striping on Didi Road, striping the right word, elongating the line which designates the turn lane on Didi Road. That's the only thing they're doing that was needed. So there were previously a couple of variances that they went through the process to request, and we're granted, those are no longer needed as the plan has evolved. So again, water and sewer is private well and septic systems. Extensive coordination with the Health Department occurred throughout this whole 11-year process. There is an existing tank and pump system for fire protection purposes on the opposite side of Didi Road, and it serves the entirety of the industrial park. Fire protection and emergency services has approved the plan. So you'll see the building elevations, and there are also some 3D views that are included in the plan set on Sheets 18 and 19. So this is the planned business center, and they have included kind of a generic restaurant design. Now, it is noted on Sheet 1, and the developer is aware, at such time that they have a direction for what this restaurant will be, that amended site plan for the fast food restaurant that shows the actual building elevations and sign details will be required for review and They have shown a site lighting plan, they're doing pole-mounted lights in the parking areas, and they stand at 20 feet above grade. Go back to the plan. So stormwater management, it will be achieved with a shared infiltration facility. There's dry wells and bioswells as well. You'll see the facility. These will be privately maintained. Required landscaping, you'll see that they do have parking lot landscaping as required, screening at their dumpsters, landscaping at the retaining wall, as well as along Didi Road and Maryland Route 140. Additional landscaping that was proposed around the perimeter of each building is in excess of what is required, but it is in response to your comments at concept review. And forest conservation will be met with off-site banking for this site. So pursuant to Chapter 155, staff does recommend approval of the site development plan subject to the seven conditions outlined in the report. Number one, that the developer enter into a public works agreement with Carroll County. Number two, that the amended plat for Walnut Park industrial subdivision, which has been approved through the review process, is ready to be recorded, that that be recorded prior to Mylar's signature on the site plan. We need to get all those easements and the shifting of the easements in place. The easements for ingress, egress, and parking will be recorded simultaneously with that amended plat. That a stormwater management easement and maintenance agreement be granted to the county. That a landscape maintenance agreement be granted to the county. And that an amended site development plan for the proposed restaurant to include building elevations and sign details will be required for review and approval. And that any changes to this plan will require an amended site development plan approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. So that concludes my report. If you have any questions for me or anybody here in front of you, engineer, developer.
Well, thank you. That was very nice. It was very helpful. Do you all have anything you'd like to add?
We appreciate being here today. As Ms. Mathias mentioned, this has been a long road. Our firm did represent Randy Cohen, predating my joining our law firm. So, you know, we are, we're excited to be here today. I know Mr. Hare is very excited, and we are happy to answer any questions that this commission might have. We do believe that we have addressed the comments and concerns that were raised as part of the concept review when Mr. Cohen owned the property. So thank you. And we're here for any questions you have.
So the only question I think I have really is just to help me understand, I don't remember where the signs actually are. It looks like there are two different signs. There's one for the restaurant, there's one for the, for the business center.
So there's, I think, my eyes aren't very good, but I think that there's a sign easement here, and there's a sign here that's for the fast food restaurant. And then the Didi World sign, I believe, is here. Did I get that right? Yep. Okay, thanks, Christina.
Okay, I see.
So along Didi Road is where that sign for the entirety of the planned business center is.
Okay. You all have any questions?
I, well, yes, of course. The, first off, I think it's a well-thought-out plan, and I think much needed in the area because there's a lot of scattered places that I'm sure will welcome coming to there. But I have a question on the fast food. I noticed the service lane that comes around is just for like one service, my, whatever you call them. And you see restaurants today, fast food with two of those. Is that something that could be changed in the future, or is it better to maybe put it now so it's not?
I think my response to that, and I'll let John chime in, because I see he might also have a response, is that that could be driven depending on the specific tenant. And at this point in time, we do not have any tenants lined up for any of this space. So it is possible that if there was a tenant interested in the space where their business model required or showed a need for that additional drive-through, that you would see that as part of an amended plan process going through you. But at this time, we don't. But at this time, we don't have a specific answer to that.
Yeah, that's correct.
I don't think, from business aspect, that you're going to have any trouble getting somebody to take that space that's going home or coming down.
We hope you're right.
Yeah. All right.
All right, great.
Yeah, good luck.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I live in Finksburg, so Janice's comments are spot-on, especially with the restaurant and consolidation of some businesses. Because we either go to Eldersburg or Westminster if we get a craving for Chick-fil-A. Which has double drive-throughs. A couple of things. First off, just a comment. I, when I read through the report here, I was pretty shocked about the Highway Administration, no changes for 140. That is a busy stretch of road. And how I went to the gas station there, what is it, Tevco? It used to be Tevco, now it's Jiffy Mark something else the other day, and made the mistake instead of turning out and going out the back way to go down 91 to get the Deer Park, trying to make the left back onto 140 there. It took me like 10 minutes. But I was listening to the radio and all that stuff. But anyway, so I, I was shocked at that. Particularly if you're coming up the hill, which I can see a lot of the traffic entering the center, particularly the restaurant, turning right onto DD, and not having an extension of, or creating a right turn lane only to get into this complex. I just, I don't get that. And then the, you know, conversely, the other way, coming towards the reservoir, before you get to the reservoir, to make a left onto DD Road, that's a pretty short turn area to get onto DD. It's very short. There's a traffic signal there, but I was just pretty shocked at that, that there was no recommendations from State Highway Administration on that. So, just a thought. I don't know that there's anything we can do about that or what. The other thought is a few months ago, we had some discussion about grant money approved for Finksburg area. Because it is a gateway, and I think Commissioner once, at one point, said that Route 140 has over 40,000 vehicles in that stretch a day, probably Monday through Friday. You know, going in and out of the county there. And there was some grant money, and I don't know if it was awarded or it was being-
It's for facade improvement. So new projects cannot take advantage?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is maybe you can be a model citizen for facade and get your neighbors to, you know, go for that grant money and go along with your beautiful building. I think that the drawings look fabulous. So, I'm all for it. I, like I said, I'm a resident of Finksburg. I think it's welcomed. And again, I'm just, I was kind, I was taken back really by the State Highway Administration saying, yeah, go ahead.
I appreciate that comment, and I also traverse that road a good bit. I think what you're kind of pointing out, Mr. Kane, is almost more of a regional concern for that. But the benefit of this site is that traffic light. Because if that traffic light weren't there, I'm sure we would have had different conversations with SHA. But that having that signalized intersection right there is just an absolute necessity for the site.
There's quite a bit of C.J. Miller traffic in and out of there too.
Yes, there's heavy equipment and-
We have no control over what State Highway does, as I understand. So I guess they'll continue to monitor it.
Right.
So, Pete, you have any questions or comments?
My own comment would be concerning the parking. You know, when you, if we were to take this second story and lay that out on the site, it wouldn't look like there's as much parking as there is. Because, again, when you keep in mind that that's a two-story building, I'm comfortable with what they're, with what they're doing there. I think it's, I think it's a good thing, the amount of parking that they have.
Yeah, I agree. Steven, any questions or comments?
No, I agree. It's a nice-looking building and know the site incredibly well. I think it'll definitely do a lot to really add a lot to that area because it is very industrial-looking as you're coming into the county.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this project? There are no members of the public that would like to comment. Well, then it sounds like we've reached the point where it's time to see if, put it this way, the chair would be happy to entertain a motion to recommend approval of the site development plan subject to the seven conditions.
Okay. I move that the site plan S160005 DD World Business Center is for approval per Chapter 155 of the Code of Public Local Laws and Ordinances of Carroll County for consideration of a concept, oh, we don't need to do that.
No, it's just the final.
It's final.
Oh, it's final, okay, all right. I'm in the wrong spot. Let me go back. All right, so I was good with all of that for approval of a final site plan subject to?
No, it's four back.
Seven? Seven conditions. At the, in the, in the, report.
Very good.
There you go.
I'll second what she said, I think.
So, we have a motion for approval of the final site plan subject to Chapter 155, subject to the seven conditions listed in the staff report. And we have a second to that motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Excellent.
Thank you all very much.
I'd like to see those pictures from 2016. This will be a good picture to take out.
Yeah.
No, there isn't.
From right there, stand forward, I mean, except for-
That tricky little mouse. I know.
Right, there's an Arby's, just in terms of fast food, that's it.
But it's difficult to get to it as well. You gotta go, and then you gotta do, like, go up around the curve and then-
Exactly.
All right, well, we'll move on to Item 15, which is indicated as introduction, solar text amendment.
Sorry, this mouse is a tricky little devil. Okay. Thank you all for being here so late today. This is our final item, and this is just an introduction for text amendment to the Employment Campus District allowing solar energy conversion facilities. So this was forwarded to you all by the Board of County Commissioners on August 4th. We went to them with a briefing and an introduction for referral to Planning Commission to make this text amendment to our Employment Campus District. I know that we had just developed the Employment Campus District some years ago. But this was a need that came about for the county to allow solar energy conversion facilities on part of our employment campus lands. So, in front of you, you should have the text amendment draft that's been proposed in your packet. But that yellow highlighting is the new language that is being suggested for the Employment Campus District. And basically, the county has to meet certain renewable energy percentages for its own portfolio. And part of that is that we need to have land that can allow more solar. So this is different than what we've been talking about today. This is different than agri-mainers, this is different than industrial. This is to allow solar energy conversion facilities, which are already allowed but not standalone ground-mounted in the Employment Campus District. So what the request is to allow them, not as part of a parking lot canopy, but a separate land, ground-mounted, as you can see here. So the yellow underlined portion is, would be the new requested language that we would like you all to consider to forward back to the Board of County Commissioners for ground-mounted solar energy conversion facilities may be approved as part of or separate from, so that's new language, the development plan pending a conditional use approval. So the request is not to make it permitted by right, but as a conditional use approval. And to also set some limits to it, so that the ground-mounted solar field may be no more than 25 acres in size or to not exceed 50% of the total acreage of the property or whichever is lesser. Roof-mounted solar energy conversion facilities may be a part, may be approved as part of the development plan, and then everything would be subject to the requirements of Chapter 158. So this would be the suggested language that, you know, would like to be amended within the Employment Campus District. So again, changing the use table would go from prohibited to conditional. Currently, these are allowed in the C3, I1, and I2 by right, conditional in C2, we're asking it for it to be conditional in the Employment Campus and prohibited in the Commercial 1 District. And these are not allowed in the residential districts. They are allowed in the agricultural district, but as that pilot project, as an agri-mainer, on agri-managing portions, and then there are size limitations and megawattages that are limited. And that's for community solar only. So this is a little bit different than that community solar. And I wasn't sure if someone from Public Works was going to be here today to, in case you had any additional questions. But that's the proposal, and this is just an introduction for today. And we can come back with more information, if you'd like, at our next meeting. But we would like you to consider this when we meet again, to allow this on the Employment Campus Districts and forward it back up to the Board of County Commissioners for their discussion and consideration for adoption.
So, a couple of quick questions. How many employment campuses do we have in the county?
We have currently one zoned employment campus. And that, other than what's in municipal growth areas in the Freedom area, which is the Delaney property. We have several identified as part of the master plan, one in the outskirts of the Finksburg area, one down toward Mount Airy. But then also this one, the Delaney, which is in the Freedom, which was the only one that was rezoned as part of the comprehensive rezoning process. And I'm going to take that back. We have a small portion within the municipal growth area of Westminster, just northwest of the landfill, kind of, not quite adjacent, but like one property over from the landfill. And that was done with the comprehending effort as well.
And the other question I have is, when it says roof-mounted solar energy conversion facilities may be approved as part of the development plan, does that mean we've got 25 acres or not exceeding 50% of the total acreage, whichever is lesser? And that's going to include whatever's on rooftop and whatever's a canopy?
No, whatever, and we maybe need to clarify that language. This would only be for standalone, not including the rooftop.
So the, when it says roof-mounted solar energy conversion facilities, is there any limitation to that? Or they can, every roof can be covered with these things?
Every roof could be covered.
And every parking lot can be covered?
Yes. As it's written.
And in addition to that, they could have 25 acres of these ground-mounted things or-
Correct.
50% ground-mounted, whichever is less.
Correct. But this is specifically to allow just a separate, without being part of an already-built structure, to have the additional ground mounted.
So what, so if there's not a structure, then the roof-mounted stuff wouldn't matter, right? Because there's no roof-
Right, because there's no structure, correct. And if there's no parking lot, the canopy wouldn't matter.
Yeah. So the, I'm, it's probably just me, but I'm confused a little bit by the language, the way it's worded, with roof-mounted solar energy conversion, that sentence.
So we already, and I apologize, I'm not quite sure why that's under, I believe we already have that in our code. Yeah, that's already there, that's already in Employment Campus.
So maybe it doesn't need to be here just because it's confused, it's at least-
It was part of the whole, whole part, and I apologize for the underlining there. That is not new language. Really, the new language is the conditional use approval, and then the ground-mounted and the size restriction. The roof, and that was just all part of what was already allowed. So we're just adding that additional language.
Can you remind us how large the Delaney property is?
It's a little over 100 acres. And, you know, we've worked with economic development and what will be transferred or has been transferred, I'm not quite sure where it stands, with the Industrial Development Authority because that's eventually who'll be marketing the property for the county about what land is usable and not usable. My understanding is, the intent is for the unusable portion to be the solar portion to meet the county's solar needs. And this property is already owned by the county, Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah, and we have property that adjoins that. So I think there's probably a significant amount that would equal that.
Yes, yes.
That's unusable.
Correct, unusable for industrial, but would be perfect for this use.
Right.
Allowing it on the Employment Campus land would just enhance the ability to be able to fully utilize this, these properties themselves collectively.
So, and like any site plan we see, when somebody wants to do that, including the county, we would see a site plan.
Yes, I mean, the county follows its own rules. So yes, you will come, it would be just like what you saw today for that solar facility. You would see a similar site plan come forward for that when, when this is approved and they move forward.
With lots of ground cover. Seems how we look right now.
Lynda, in your preamble, you said a mouthful concerning the, you know, this would be a way for the county to meet its solar, what did you say, guidelines? Or what did you say?
And I don't want to speak for, because this is not my area of expertise, but my understanding is that we, as the county, have a certain threshold of renewable energy that we have to meet. And this will meet the need for that because this would be something that the county would be working hand-in-hand with the solar company.
And so, when we start talking about these other solar facilities within the county, that has nothing to do with the county meeting. It's, that's what you're trying to say, is that right?
Well, so let's, let's, let's take this, this particular request, what is because of that? But we should not be looking at the change to the text because the county is going to be utilizing it. You have to decide if it's good for all of the Employment Campus Districts. I would say, yes, it is. Because this way, on unusable portions like this piece, this was something we didn't really foresee, that this, when we even developed the Employment Campus District, the need for this type of solar appropriately cited. So on larger development projects, which these Employment Campuses are situated, there will be some usable and some unusable. So for the unusable portion, this is a good way to have the highest and best use available for those lands.
Okay. I have to confess, when I saw it, I wasn't cool with it because that's, that's, that's too strongly stated. I was, I was taken aback by, you know, we are, I want solar. I think we all want solar. At the same time, like I said before, you know, when I was out of order, I think, we are, we like the way our county looks, and I think everybody is mainly concerned with appearances. You know, we want solar, but we don't want to lose the quality of, the visual quality that is inherent to our current county, the way our current county looks. And so, again, I'm not against solar. But I think when it comes to allowing for these large solar fields, we just need to be really sensitive to the citizens' desire to maintain. Otherwise, why are we spending $4 million a year, you know, preserving an ag? You know, because that's what we think is important. So again, finding that balance, like you've, you were always pointing out and saying, I think that is key. Hearing this explanation, I'm not, I'm not on the cliff that I thought, that I thought it was on when I initially read it. Because I was kind of taken aback, that goodness gracious, here we go again, more solar. We are going to get roasted, you know, by the citizens of the county because it's just going to be everywhere. And so, you know, I'm able to walk back a little bit now that you've explained it. So I appreciate that. But again, 50% and 25 acres, I think, you know, when you think of 25 acres of solar, that's a big farm. That's a big, that's a big solar farm for me. And so I just kind of need to get my head around it. Anyway. Anyway.
Well, as I was saying earlier, maybe we could have a, it would help me if we maybe had a topic at one of our work sessions to remind us where we allow solar for various, in the various zoning, because I've forgotten, and I'm just saying, Pete, when I first came on, solar wasn't a thing. And then over the years, it started getting introduced, and it's more prevalent, and I honestly don't remember how we've evolved and where we permit solar and where we don't. And I'm not asking to discuss it today, certainly. But just a recap and a refresher for me would give me a broader context as we look at it.
Sure. And we allow in different ways. So we allow residential, for its residential use, rooftop, or ground-mounted, both size limitations, for personal use. And then in the commercial districts, just like we're seeing here with this employment campus proposal, we allow for that energy conversion use in those districts only. And in the ag district, we only allow it for community solar, and that's only on agriculture remainder. So this proliferation could never happen, as we have it currently written within our code. And we really do have it very limited, and I think very appropriately cited. The 25 acres, I know that seems big, but in really, in the reality and scope, it really is not that large. And I'm not saying we should be like Pennsylvania, but there are parts where it's hundreds of acres of just solar field. And, and it is, unfortunately, we have to have energy, so it's a necessary, it's necessary in order to keep driving our current lifestyles with the energy consumption that we have in a better way. So this is necessary that we have these, we make allowances for them, and I think we're looking how to appropriately cite them, it works for Carroll County. Again, I think the ag, and unfortunately, you know, we are so rural, so any piece of raw land that we have in the county is rural and agricultural in nature right now. But the intent for a lot of what we've been talking about is for commercial and industrial, and so we do have to make allowances for that. And what we're saying is, this would be a good way to use unusable land, even though we don't specifically say it. No one's going to be putting solar as a leftover on the best land for industrial, commercial development, but this allows that unusable portion of those properties for a higher and better use to be put into solar.
And we can have a voice on that when we look at the site plan, too.
Absolutely.
If you're putting it right out along the highway, and we could say, why is it there? And it should be maybe somewhere else.
And I would say, in the future, when we're doing something like this, I'm familiar with that property, so I realize that there is quite a bit of unusable. But it might be good to have a topography picture that we could see, oh yeah, here's where-
So I want to be careful that, even though the request, again, is because of this-
Right.
-we should not be always looking at for this project. Think about the other employment campus. So what I can come back to all with, and again, this is something, you know, that the county, really, a county, would like to move forward as part of what we need to do, but we can go over the employment campus districts where they're cited, and then talk about, you know, the greater picture at hand. And we can have a work session about solar in general. I'm happy to put something together at a future meeting.
I don't think it needs to be long. I mean, you've done a nice recap here, but just reminding us of-
Sure.
-of exactly maybe what the bulk requirements are and things like that, not, not for today.
What did we do at South Carroll? Was that where?
Up on the hill?
Yeah.
Wind field there.
That was separate from, that was not-
Was that agricultural?
I know what you're talking about, I cannot remember exactly, but that was not a county project. So, I don't.
Okay.
It just came through you all as part of our planning commission process.
Okay.
I have to admit, the detail you just gave us off the top of your head is pretty impressive.
Thank you.
So, thank you for that. All right, so we can consider this, think about it, and then we'll have a-
Yeah, this is just an introduction for you today to let you know that-
Very helpful.
At our next meeting, we'll be having a more robust discussion on this, and be looking for whatever recommendation you all feel is best, good for the commissioners.
All right, thank you. So we close this out, I think, and then ask if any general public comment anyone would like to make. Hearing none, I would be happy to entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.